Are we set?
Uh huh.
We will go with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
George Colas.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Here.
Mark Freeman.
Here.
Pat Feeney.
Here.
Steve Ruth.
Here.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
I had one comment. On the minutes it said I was absent, I think I was here.
That would be a minute correction.
Yeah, blast.
Oh, then we need to fix those.
Alright.
Okay, so I would amend my motion on, I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support that. I think you'll find that on the first page, Courtney.
Uh huh, I got it, I'll change that.
Yep, okay. Any other additions or dilations to any of the minutes? None appearing, roll call please.
Steve Ruth.
Here.
Yes, I mean, and here.
Pat Feeney.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
George Colas.
Yes. Okay, we need a motion to move into public hearing?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Clerk Winchester, support by Treasurer Freeman, to move into public hearing. We will start with the Holly Township proposed budget. I'll have us do a motion for two public hearings independently? Yeah, okay. So, the first public hearing will be for the Holly Township proposed budget. Anybody wish to speak on behalf of the budget? Mr. Engelberg.
Tony Engelberg, 115 Cox Hill, Chair of Holly Township Planning. Couple of things, I guess, I will just, for the record, always lobby to put a little bit more funding in the budget for the Planning Commission, just kinda have to say that. I also wanted to talk a little bit about our Assistant to the Supervisor and Code Enforcement Officer. I was a little shocked to see the wage that Amy is being paid for the amount of work and the amount of time that she puts in. I don't think you're gonna find anybody out there who's going to do the job she's doing, the amount of hours she's putting in, and in the way she represents the township, for approximately, if my memory is correct, about $28,000 a year, plus, I do think she's getting, correct me if I'm wrong, some health insurance benefits, but, um, there's a lot of good things going on in the township right now, and a lot of the credit has to go to Supervisor Colas for that, as well as the rest of the board, but also, the fact that Amy has been going and attending meetings and being involved in things that, if there was only George around, we would not have that representation. I had the privilege of going with her to the CISMMA meeting last month, and she didn't just sit there and nod off and take notes, she was actively involved, verbally communicative, and represented us in the way that all of the taxpayers in this room would want to be represented. And it's important to note that Holly Township can be, unfortunately, easily forgotten by some of the bigwigs in our state, and the fact is, if we don't have Supervisor Colas and Amy out there carrying our message and letting the state know that, hey, we're here, we're important, and there's things that we need to get done, it's the citizens that are gonna lose. So, I just want, as you guys are going through the budget, I want you to realize that she is an extremely valuable part of what we're trying to get done around here, and I appreciate her help as a code enforcement officer, every time I've had a question, had to call her about something, it's been extremely professional, extremely easy for her to get ahold of her, and so, that's about all I got, I just wanted to let the public know that we've got somebody sitting over here that's doing a really good job for the community. Well, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment regarding the budget? None appearing. Let me pause for just one moment, I noticed the lady over here doing sign, do we have some folks from the deaf community with us today?
Right here.
Okay, no, that's great, I'm glad to hear it. My wife taught at the school for the deaf for 30 years, and up in Flint, so, I'm familiar with that, and I'm glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion to close public hearing. Support. Motion Clerk Winchester, support Treasurer Freeman, to close the public hearing on the Holly Township budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we will entertain a motion for public hearing on the annual redetermination confirming Special Assessment District for the Purpose of the Fire and Emergency Service and Supporting Villages. So moved.
Support.
Moved by Treasurer Freeman, support by Clerk Winchester, to open in public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are in public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf of the Special Assessment District for the Purpose of the Fire and Emergency Service and Supporting Villages? None appearing, the Chair want to entertain a motion to close public hearing. So moved. Support. Motion by Treasurer Freeman, support by Trustee Ruth, to close public hearing on the Assessment District for the Purpose of Fire and Emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will move on to reports. We've got quite a big audience tonight, I want to welcome everybody here. I've touched base on this before, but it's always good to help get the word out, as a supervisor's report, many of you have heard that we have a... Oh, I did, I wrote right over it, sorry. Let me back up, I got Ron Campbell and Joe Frost, you should have been waving to me there, Ron. We've got a presentation by Ron Campbell and Joe Frost, from the Oakland County Planning, regarding the Holly Heritage Farm Master Plan, for those of you that don't know that, the farmstead is on North Holly Road, just north of the village, about a mile, the township has owned that property since 2003, and we are in the process of putting together a master plan so that we can move forward on developing it. Many of you have seen the barn that was sitting up on blocks for most of the winter, that was phase one of a project to work on the barn, it got moved over, Mother Nature kinda got in our way for a while, so, they've moved it back over, we've got a couple of problems going forward, but we're working those out, and, but, in the meantime, these gentlemen have helped us working on a master plan for the farmstead, and they will present that tonight, so, Ron and Joe?
Thank you. The point of tonight's talk or update is the status of the master planning effort. This is being undertaken at the supervisor's request for Main Street, Oakland County, and our Design Assistance, Planning and Historic Preservation Services, so this is all provided by the county, no charge to the township per se. Give you an update, we have been in the process, we've toured several sites now with the committee, we actually had a school group, a college group, young architects, aspiring to be young architects, work on it and come up with some ideas and suggestions, and Joe has been doing a tremendous amount of historical research on the property, and currently, I'm in the process of doing some site analysis and design work, but what we'd like to do is present to you a way to enlist public input into this project, and Joe, what he's handed out is a survey that can be done either physically with the handout, or online. The barcode, I'll let Joe explain more about that, but the idea is to enlist the public, see what they like, what they could envision for that, how it might be used, beyond things that we can even imagine. Once we get that information, we'll compile it, and we'll set about doing a master plan, that master plan, we anticipate will be presented at the September 5th meeting here, which will have some graphics and actually site plan that I think will help illustrate some of our points. So with that, I'll turn it to Joe, and he can talk more about the survey that would be available.
Thanks, Ron, thank you Supervisor Colas and trustees, again, my name is Joe Frost, I'm, excuse me, Associate Planner, Oakland County's Planning Department, with emphasis on historic preservation, so, what we did is we put together, through some input from Supervisor Colas, a little bit of an introduction, the paper copy is the same questions as what you'll see digitally, so, there's a link here, and Supervisor, I will email that link to you and Amy, so you can get it up on your social media, and, you know, your e-blast, whatever you use, whatever mediums, but, there's also this board that you can take to other community functions, it has a QR code on it, if you're familiar with the QR barcode, so, somebody can just scan this QR code, and that will take you right to the link, you can do the survey on your phone, there's also the written link there as well, so, we figured we would kinda keep it, you know, the old adage, less is more, we didn't want to clutter it up, this is actually our second version of this board, the first version was a little bit more involved, but we looked at it, and we thought that this was more fitting for what the site and what the community needs, so it's broken down, really, in four parts, three parts are kinda the main body of the survey, the existing structures, north, south, and houses, and then the barn, enhancements, new structures, relocated structures, the grounds overall, programs, activities, including educational, leisure, and potentially even income-producing activities on the site, so, page by page, you can see what this looks like, now, the digital version does not have the photos, and that's okay, but it still has the questions, and simply, we ask the respondents, you know, what would you prefer to see at the existing south house, once it's restored, and there's a list of options, there's also an "other" so that people could put something there that may not have been something that was already included, so, there's a little bit of flexibility there, similarly, for the north house.
Did you see that it says "south" again?
No!
Yeah.
Did it say "south" again?
I was looking at that.
You know, we look at this a thousand times, and that's why we always get the second set of eyes, or in this case, a third set of eyes. But, you know what, that's okay, because what I can do is update this, and I'm gonna email this to Amy and Supervisor Colas anyways, and give you sort of the master copy, you can print as many copies of this as you want, and it will have the link on there too, this is really more for demonstration purposes anyways. The barn, we did include a question on the barn, and we know that, and we understand that a lot of effort has already gone on with the barn already, and there's a grant, and there are certain things that have to happen with the barn because of that grant, but we didn't want to leave it out either, because it is a key portion of that, and Supervisor Colas and I talked about this a little bit on this particular question, but we decided to keep it in there, and we didn't, we felt like, the options that were in here, really were in keeping with that grant anyways. Enhancements, and you'll see down the page, these are sort of examples of things that could be there, not that we're suggesting that they do go there, but, for example, a gazebo, there's some livestock stalls, and, you know, archery, things that have come up in other public meetings, moving right along, park enhancements, the grounds, you know, what improvements do you prefer to see on the grounds, community garden, picnic area, nature trails, et cetera, very similar, same for educational programming, enrichment classes, field trips, day camps, agricultural lectures, et cetera, leisure activities, these would be more like, you know, a fair, art fair, family outings, reunions, tractor pulls, seed exchanges, income-producing, perhaps, you know, a use for one of these structures is an income-producing thing, you gotta pay the bills, so perhaps rental for private events, you know, maybe leased space for a commercial use, again, we're not suggesting that at this time, just looking at all options, selling of farm-produced goods, maybe tree and forestry harvesting, this next one, we were kinda scratching our heads a little bit, because this, the history of this property is quite rich, it goes all the way back to the Andrews, who were one of the first settlers in Holly Township, all the way up through the Hollies, and the Hollies were descendants of the Andrews, and Thomas Fagan right there, kinda in between, who was Supervisor of Holly Township for many years, so, you know, a lot of historic sites use living history and historic interpretation to tell the story and to tell the significance of their properties, and, so, we were kinda interested, what does the community want to see, we know what the research is kinda telling us, that it has a long history, that spans from the 1850s all the way into the 20th century, but, is there a particular interest of the community to see, you know, say, the Civil War era interpreted, or the Great Depression era? So, these options are all there, and maybe even into that more modern age, you know, the farm was still active well into the 20th century, so it'll be interesting to see what we get back in responses, then the potential partnerships, we want to see, you know, if folks who are responding to this are associated with a community group or organization that could potentially be a partner, for example, 4H, and I understand you have had conversations with 4H and MSU Extension, et cetera, but garden clubs, environmental clubs, historical societies, would you be willing to volunteer or give financially to support it, we kinda like to see where folks are in that as well, would your group be interested, and how might your group utilize the farm? Now, on the digital version, there is a place for them, an optional place for them to provide contact information as well, that may become useful later on, when you want to send out a newsletter about the farm, or you want to solicit for donations or similar, so, with that, it's certainly a step towards the master plan, and we're eager to find out what the community, and all of you, I hope everyone in this room, there's, how many people here, so, there's at least, you know, 50 responses right there, right? So I encourage all of you to take the survey, let us know what you think, you might all be here for that, you're here for the Holly Township, no kidding. Been two public meetings and nobody stood up, I'm kinda nervous. So, so with that, Ron and I will entertain any questions that the trustees and you, Mr. Supervisor, may have.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Feeney?
Are you gonna make the results public, for all the...
We can, and what, the nice thing about the digital survey is that it compiles everything, gives percentages of how questions were answered, and, with the paper copies, you know, we'll give you the master one, you can print out as many copies as you want, and then, once those come back to us, we can input those into that system too, so we'll have them all there compiled, and ideally, at the end, you know, any master plan, you want to include your public involvement, so, perhaps it's an appendix or something with some reports broken down of how people responded.
We find this to be probably pretty helpful too, in future, as we proceed and look for grants, to show that, well, we've got X amount of percentage of population that favors this, it just builds a starter case when we apply the grants. Like I said, we plan to have this wrapped up by September, your meeting then, so we'll be, you know, the surveys, I think, George, you're prepared to really hit the community hard with this, and have the results back by the end of July, so we can do our...
We're gonna be set up with different activities, different opportunities to give public input. For those of you that aren't familiar with the project, you mentioned how many people were here tonight for this, I know that Mary Blanchard and Harvey Sorensen came in, they're over here, I lost them somewhere, they came in, they're part of the Holly Heritage Farmstead Committee, these are the people that work out there with the community garden, Harvey's been instrumental in so much on the farmstead, with the plow days that we've had in the past, and some of the different events that are out there, and I know they've had car shows, and they've had farmers' markets, and they've had a haunted house out there over the years, some different projects going forward, and what happened when I came into office was I said, you know, a lot of people said, "We haven't done a lot of development because we don't have any money," and I said, "As long as we don't have a plan, we're not gonna have any money," so with, the board agreed, we started to look forward to putting a plan together to develop this property, and in that process, we talked about educational opportunities and getting involvement for the 4H, and giving a place for kids to go and learn and have something to do, and, because you hear so many times from our youth that there's nothing to do, or there's nowhere to go, and as we started putting this plan together, we've actually had people come forward with interest, I had somebody from Oakland County 4H Fair out today to tour the property to get involved, the 4H Fair's coming up in a couple of weeks out of the fairgrounds in July, and some of these different groups are interested in getting involved, and that group from Baker College that did the plan, their concept of what could be done was interesting as well, but, as this project is developing, we had somebody from the community step forward, show an interest in the development, and they gave us a kickoff of $100,000 to start this program going forward. So, the idea of having a plan is how you get that money, and as they both said, there are several, several groups out there that have grant monies available, part of the project with the barn right now was funded through a grant through the Community Foundation out of Flint, so, this master plan will allow us to move forward and do more development, and you'll see more activity out there on the property, so that the taxpayers of this community get to actually realize a benefit out of this property going there. I'm excited myself, as we go down the road, I can't wait to have a summer Jazz Fest or something like that, but I mean, everybody's gonna have their own idea and what they want to see, and I get to write that on my survey, just as you get to write things down on yours. So I want to thank Ron and Joe, I know they've been out here on several occasions, Ron and I were out there one day, Joe, you happened to miss that one, but it was very bitter cold, we scheduled one of those last snowstorms in the spring, we scheduled for the kids to come out and tour the property, and we did it in the wind, in the slant of the snow coming down.
Amy joined us.
Yeah, Amy was out there with us, that was a, that was a pretty rugged trip around the farmstead, so I want to thank you for all the energy and effort, we look forward to getting this out into the community, we'll be down at the car show, we'll be at movie nights, we'll be at those different events over the next couple of months, getting these surveys filled out, and I'm hoping the board members will help as well in getting the word out there and getting responses as we move forward on this.
Wonderful, well, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the audience, on this particular thing?
Where's the location of that?
This is North Holly Road, you know, as you're going out of town, past McDonald's, as you're going north and you have to make the curve and go, that's the farm, right there.
Oh, that big red barn they've been putting up on...
The big red barn up in the air, that's the south house, is obviously on the south side of the barn, the north house is the next house up, and that's, that's the property we're talking about, that property goes...
I thought that barn was the north.
It goes from, it grows from the first curve to the last curve, all that stretch along there, and the back of the property is bounded at one section by Schwartz Creek, so, it's, it's an interesting parcel of land, and I hope that we'll be able to develop this into something that the community will be able to enjoy for years to come, so, I want to thank you for your energy, your help in getting this project off the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, thank you trustees, Amy, I'll send to you tomorrow the master copy of this, which is a little more complete, again, this is more for the demonstration and discussion purposes, but I'll have some instructions, you know, so if somebody gets the paper copy, they could, they still know how to get to the digital copy.
Can we get flyer-sized copies of kind of like that board with the QR code?
Yes, absolutely.
We can even put those out?
Yep, I will send those to you tomorrow.
Perfect.
Cool, thank you.
We'll take a little bit of evening, and in the morning, we'll go through this and help you proofread it, in case there's any other spots that we need to...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hey, you know what, it happens to everybody.
I can tell you the house was built in 1850, but I don't know which one's the north or the south one, so...
Yes, and that's why I say, as the Director of the Dickens Festival, when we first printed up the first flyer, my phone number was on there for people to call, and I looked at it, and said, "Great, we're up in Frankenmuth passing the flyer up," and I said to somebody, I said, "Just give us a call, number's right there on the bottom, 1894, call me," and she said, "You mean 1895?" And I said, "No, no, no, 18..." She said, "It says 95," I said, "No, it doesn't, it was my own phone number, I didn't even see it," so, typos happen, they get right past us.
Thank you.
I hope you appreciate the end of both age representations here, the paper copy, right, for us, the digital code where you just hold your phone up to it and it takes you to it.
Well, that's, that's why Amy and I make a good team, because I'm the, I'm the paper copy guy, I'm the guy that wants to talk to you hand in hand, and she's the one, I'll just send them all emails.
Well, that's where John, that's...
Yeah, that's, so, we cover both of those bases, there's been more than one time where I've gone, "Amy, can you come in here, what did I do, how do I fix that?" So, I know, it happens, alright, well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
So, we will move on to now reports, and I was gonna, because we have a lot of people that we haven't seen in our meetings before, we, in cooperation with Oakland County Road Commission, we were able to obtain a grant to rebuild North Holly Road, that is going to be from the village all the way north to the township line, and if you don't know where that is, it's that County Line Road, I don't know how better to tell you, but it's, it's up at the north end, just before the new construction for Grand Blank and so forth, that's a $3 million grant, that's a project that's going to literally let us rebuild that whole road, work on drainage and so forth, the engineering plans will be starting toward the end of the summer, the actual work will happen in the summer of 2020, that's the drawdown date for the money, gives us a chance to get ready, we're gonna be working on several things in the meantime, as we go forward, one of them is, we're looking at bringing a gas line down North Holly Road, for any of you that live in that area, those people are on propane, there's gas in the village, there's gas in the northern end of the township, there's gas in the corners from Fenton, from Grand Blank, but the gas line has never come down North Holly Road, so we're gonna look at doing that, and see if it, if we can make that happen, so that we get that in before the brand-new road comes in, so that it doesn't show up five years from now, tearing up our brand-new road, so, that's the other part of that project that we're working on. As we're going through reports, Treasurer?
Yes, I have good news for the public, we're working on your summer tax bills, and you'll see the fireworks in your mailbox on July 1st.
So we won't, we won't have to go to the fireworks store?
Okay, and the clerk?
No report.
Pat Feeney?
Let Steve go first.
Nothing for me.
Okay, well, I'll begin by apologizing, that is, I have a couple of things here that I'm going to bring up, and bear with me, please. Our last Planning Commission meeting, we covered a couple, the Renaissance Festival, and we approved that to go forward, and that, we were very happy with the results and their cooperation, the planner was very happy, fire was very happy, so it's, you know, it's a goal. Other item that came up concerned Holly Hills Manufactured Home Community, and that's concerning the expansion, as many of you know, it, they came forward to present a plan, their site plan, to the Planning Commission, we listened to their plans, we listened to some of the residents' concerns and that, and a couple of things came up that were a major concern to the Planning Commission members, and some people in the public, and that is, without going into the sordid history, we're under a consent agreement because of, well, there lies the problem, we're not quite sure why, there's an explanation in part of the consent agreement, that it could be, the reason why we're under these rules is because of this, or we could be under this because of state rules, we weren't really sure. So, the question we began to ask ourselves was, well, what do we really have the right to say, and to, you know, are we just, you know, speaking our minds and nothing we can really do? One of the main concerns was, water situation, they're going to use the same water system, which I guess was built to actually handle the expansion, but has never been used, obviously, because they haven't grown to that size, and, the concern is with that, is right now, that water system, as part of their agreement that we had, or court orders and court cases and that, discharges... that we had or court orders and court cases and that, part, uh, discharges it after it's been treated into wetlands on the other side of Holly Road. Over the years, there's been issues on and off with the water system. Residents have sued for difficulties with the water. Um, non-residents have had, you know, questions about the water system and that. So one of the things that the planning commission was, wasn't sure how to proceed with or even to put the question towards, uh, the next step up is, is this system capable of handling the expansion? Well, as it would be, just a few days after our planning commission meeting, they had a boil water alert. I mean, now, I'm not going to tell you, I don't know the details, but you know, it's just kind of odd that, you know, you have a problem with the water. And here's something I want to state, make it perfectly clear. For those who think that you're going to stop the project, that's not going to happen. Now, you know, and I, I've yet to speak to anybody that really thinks they're going to stop the project completely. Um, and for those in the, uh, manufactured home community and that, we represent you too and our concerns over the water have as much concern about your safety as it does for the rest of the community. So when we were talking about that, we'd like to see the board authorize a sampling of the water to verify that the water is being treated properly and is being, you know, and the residents are, you know, it's adequate water to drink and to use. Uh, we understand that there's a lot of limitations on what we can do, but our thought was, this is a public safety issue. And considering the fact that they just had a, you know, boil water alert, I don't think it's so far fetched to say, can we at least find out? And let's be frank, if the system's having problems with, with the size of the community is right now, you know, I, it's not far stretched for someone to think, well, what's going to happen when they increase it? And, you know, but getting back to what our other concerns were is, we're asked to approve a site plan, but we're really not sure because of the vagueness in the consent agreement and the rest of the agreement, what exactly we can and cannot do. You know, and it's kind of like, so can we tell the residents, like, okay, we're going to require them to do this? And when you approve the site plan, no need to be told? No, you can't. And just for clarification, ladies and gentlemen, uh, the state of Michigan has a mobile home, uh, manufacturer home authority that governs a lot of what goes on in the manufactured homes and that. And the question is, how much authority do we have, you know, as a? So in other words, we'd like to see is to, uh, to have the water tested because we feel that's a safety issue. We think, we, we think the board, the township has the right to do that, to ask, you know, can we test the water? You know, I think that's a fair thing to, uh, to see. Second is, we'd like the board to have our attorney look at the consent agreement and the rest of it and give us an idea, where do we stand? We're confused. We don't know exactly where our rights are. If the consent agreement would give us even an inch more of some say in the planning of it, we would greatly appreciate it. We realize there are state rules that, you know, we, we can't fight on the local level. We understand that. But if that's, you know, if we absolutely could do nothing and the state controls it all, then what do we, you know, what's the planning commission doing? You know, we're not here to rubber stamp something for them to pass it along. We're not here to tell the residents, well, this is what we want to see done, knowing full well, we can't do it. That's what we need some clarification on. So that's where, I mean, we're not looking for you to battle, to try to take this out because it's going to happen. It would be nice if we had some say in the density. Be nice to be able to say if we had some say in, you know, some of the things they did, you know, street, you know, widths. Um, it was a little alarming. They're going to have an entrance off of Fagan Road.
Falkland.
Falkland. I'm sorry. I have a problem, I have a mental block with the name Falkland on that thing. And the engineer stood at our planning commission meeting saying, well, I don't know why anybody on that road would be worried. They're going to drive through the park and go out onto, uh, East Holly Road. And I mean, that's absurd. And even if it were true, then the residents that are already living there, well, their quality of life's going to go right down the tubes because you're going to have all that traffic, you know, tripling the size of it and they're going to be piling out right by your place. But we really do feel that it is necessary for us to have a better understanding on what the planning commission can do and cannot do. I think it would make it clear to the residents too that we could sit there and say, this is what we can do. You know, there's going to be residents that are going to say they're not happy with that and say, we're not happy with it either. But at least they know and they can move on from there if they choose to take some action on that. The water, that's, like I said, if they're having issues right now with the size of it is now, can we only imagine what could happen if it gets larger? It's a self-contained system, sewage system. It is built, it was built to, you know, take a larger capacity, but they're having problems with it already. So, you know, that's kind of where we lie. So we'd like to have the board approve having the water tested by an independent body. And as a separate issue, we'd like to have the attorney take a look at this and just, you know, give us some clarification. On that issue, that's pretty much all I have to say on it. I mean, I don't know how anybody else feels on it, but like I said, I want to stress, I have yet to talk to anybody that has, that's like, oh, we want to stop completely. They realize that's not going to happen. They have the right to do what they're doing. You know, I mean, we're just asking, you know, that, to see what we can do to modify it in any degree. That's all. Second issue, and this is, this is one that I'm sure you guys, the board is especially here, tired of hearing me talk about, but I think we're at an end to it, but I think the board needs to take action on it. And that concerns the 425. As of last Tuesday, the village manager got up and said at a meeting that the, uh, village was no longer going to pursue the 425 issue. I was happy to hear that. I think the people in the affected area were happy to hear that. But what he did not do and what did not take place was, the committee still stands. His exact words to the village council was, no further actions needed to be taken. So in other words, that committee still stands. And as far as I'm concerned, that still holds it over these property owners' heads because it could be reactivated at any time. So what I would ask is that the board just, you know, now, I know you're going to say redundant or it's been taken care of, but what's the harm in redundancy by taking the vote and saying, we are withdrawing from this 401 committee? No, you know, this has no bearing on any other 401, 425 committee. Uh, doesn't have any bearing barring us from being involved in 425 committee in the future. It just said the committee would have to be reformed. And the way I look at that, it would have to be done in the public light. People, you know, would know what's going on. So I, on that one, I'd like to make a motion right now because I don't know where else I could do it.
You can't make a motion during a report.
Well, yeah.
And the item's not on the agenda.
Well, here's my question. How many times, number one, why wasn't it on the agenda? Because after the last meeting, well, and that, that's not your doing, I know that.
Okay. I hate to be a stickler here, but this is reports.
Well, okay.
And you have the right to give your report and then when your for, your report is completed, then we progress with the agenda.
And then my report is completed and it's not on the agenda, so that's the end of the conversation. Ladies and gentlemen, that's your decision on that. So we'll, we'll just let it linger. And my question is, and rightfully, I think so, is after the last meeting, this should have been on the agenda. Shouldn't have had to been asked to be on the agenda. It should have been taken care of. And what was done on Tuesday by the village manager does not resolve the issue because it leaves the committee standing. We should withdraw from the committee, simple as that. I mean, I don't know what the difficulty is in this. And quite frankly, the way this is set up, uh, you know, well, we choose not to put it on the agenda, we'll just pass it down the line. We have stuff on the agenda tonight that actually should have been brought up months ago, but we'll talk about that later. Uh, you know, quite frankly, if you guys want to move it on down to the next meeting, so be it. But you know, it's nonsense and it's, you know, I'd really like to see each individual here have something like that on, well, you know, well, I guess if, you know, someone decides they're going to do something that involves my property, well, whatever. But, and quite frankly, I don't care for the way we do, we set this up because this basically, you know, we'll run it and... Can I ask in a report, why wasn't this put on the agenda? It was pretty much, uh, you know, first of all, was anything said to the village about, uh, I want to say that some people might thought when they left here that something was going to be transmitted to the village of our interest in leaving the committee? Was anything transmitted to the village on that?
Yes, I had a meeting with, uh, the village manager, which is why he took it to the council. He informed me that they were shelving it and that he would be sending a letter. So.
Be shelving it. That's the point. I don't, you know, they're not, we represent these people. They don't want to shelf, they want it eliminated.
You asked me a question, I was informing you what he told me. He said he was going to be sending me a letter. When I receive the letter, it will be on the agenda so we can refer to it as we did at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, as you said, it just happened Tuesday, so that's where that was.
Everything always happens at the last minute, I noticed.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Under report.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to public comment. Members of the public can address the board on agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. And who would like to address the board at this time as public comment?
Mark Taylor, 15566 Falk Road, Holly Township President. Uh, I just wanted to clarify and hopefully for all of us residents as well, all of the funds that are going to this project here are by grants?
Uh, not all of them, yes. Some, the reason I say that is because the one grant was a matching grant.
Okay. So how much money does Holly Township have involved in the project there?
It was a $40,000 grant. It had $40,000 in matching funds.
Okay. So the Holly Township residents are matching $40,000?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? None appearing. We will move on to, uh, there is no old business. We'll move on to new business. Engineer ISO water certification. Uh, Karen, do you want to talk or do you want to let Chief Lindstrom?
Yeah, yeah.
You want to inform the public what this?
Oh, sorry.
They were on the table as you came in. Sorry about that.
Oh, there was?
Yep.
I need to bring a copy. I know what it is though, so. Um, what the board has in front of them is a invoice for engineering services that the North Oakland County Fire Authority incurred during our ISO audit, which most of you know, um, brought us up to a ISO class level three, which is one of the top in the state. We had several water sources throughout both townships that needed to be certified in order to get credit for using them for ISO. Just because we have a river that we tell them that we can dip into with our pumps doesn't mean that they count it towards it. It has, you have to have an engineer come out and do a study on it and measurements and all that stuff and get it stamped and approved and then send it into ISO. So, um, the cost of the water sources that were certified and engineered, we did about 20 of them across the two townships together. Uh, the cost for that was $9,998?
$49.50.
Total.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, so how we normally do everything with the fire authority between the two townships is split it. Um, so what the board has in front of them is an invoice for half of that cost, $4,950 to be paid, uh, to the engineer services for, um, certifying those water sources for the communities. Any questions?
Thank you.
Did you want to leave with the actual document?
Please.
Engineer ISO water certification, do we need to move on that or is it?
Yeah, no, we need to move on it. Um, because we need to do a budget amendment for the SAD, um, coming up in our budget amendments.
Okay. So you want to take the lead on that?
I would move to approve, uh, the payment in, of $4,950 for engineering services to certify the water sources in Holly and Rose.
Support. So it's been moved by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Ruth, uh, to approve the finance for the engineer ISO water certification. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Pat Feeney?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
George Colas?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, the 2017-2018 Holly Township Parks Budget Amendments. Is anyone here from the parks tonight?
Tony was supposed to be here.
Okay, Tony was supposed to be here. I had a couple of questions on the budget when you looked through it. Um, did anybody answer, any questions on the board?
We're on the budget amendments right now.
This is just an amendment to their current budget. Where's? I'm not seeing it. That's what I was going to say, where's that?
I don't know.
I want to say some of it was, did they have any?
2018-09.
Right.
Resolution?
Yep.
Couple of the amendments were for the, uh, football program, right? Didn't they just had a new gentleman take over the football program and what's that? Is that not the new member that we had a couple of months ago for the football program? He's got a job, so. So I'm thinking some of the expenses probably with him doing some rearranging and looking, seeing what they need.
I think they're, uh, making it better. From what I heard, it was going down to...
I went to their first clinic last night and they had five different coaches there. And I know that the lead on that is Dan Couchman, who's a local here. That was actually, it was really great. All of the boys did a great job.
So I, I think that's one of the on there that I think we could probably say that's, you know.
These are just year end, they do every semester every year.
These are budget amendments.
We have two amendments.
Right. But I'm just saying, I think this is something that... We're looking at $3,393 being moved from line items to different line items to balance their budget. So, Chair, would entertain a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Support?
Support.
It's been moved by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Feeney, to approve the Township Parks Budget Amendments. Uh, proposed resolution 2018-09. Roll call, please.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
George Colas?
Yes.
Pat Feeney?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go to the 2018 Holly Township.
And these are our budget amendments.
Oh, now, these are the budget amendments for the township.
Yes.
I see what you did.
So there's only two of them. Uh, the one was, uh, Janice opted out of the healthcare, so we had to increase her department for the health, health opt-out payments.
That's the deputy treasurer?
That's the deputy treasurer. And then, uh, the amendment for the payment of the ISO water certification in the SAD in the SAD fund.
So we're looking at $1,200 on one and $5,000 on the other?
Yes.
Okay.
I would move to approve proposed resolution 2018-10.
Support? It's been moved by Clerk Winchester, support by Supervisor Colas, to approve the proposed resolution 2017-10, which is the Holly Township Budget Amendments. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, you said 2017, is that what you meant?
2018.
Oh, but it does say 17 on the paper.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Okay. I'm sorry, so it is, for the record, it's 2018-10.
It's on the, or on the resolution.
Yeah, the resolution's correct, the agenda's got it wrong. I just read it off the agenda, so. But it is 2018-10.
I wrote it down.
Roll call, please.
Pat Feeney?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
George Colas?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Now the Holly Township Parks Budget. And that is, I saw some doors moved, did anybody come in from the parks? Okay. I had one question, because I remembered that they raised her salary last year because they were taking on the football program. And then I noticed on the, on the budget here that there's a reduction of revenue from 5,000 to nothing regarding leagues and tournaments. And then another reduction of $5,000 for football and cheerleading. And I wondered, is, is the program shrinking, or did it, did something stop? But we don't know. That was, that was my one question. And then I saw where it said rent lease park two went from 4,000 to 1,000. So I wondered if that was part of, in connection with the leagues and tournaments. And then down. Yeah, so that, that was my question.
Because the expense went down considerably to 9,000 for football and cheerleading.
Yeah. So I, that was gonna be my question, if there had been someone here to talk about that. What is the board's pleasure?
Do you like to table until we have somebody here to speak about it?
They have to have.
I would say I think we have to approve it by July first.
Yeah.
Well.
I mean, I'm with Pat, it's like, what happened, they were supposed to be here.
Yeah, well, that's true. Person's job to be here. Play for your budget, right? Or explain why you don't have a budget.
So where do we want to move on this?
I'd move to approve the 2018-2019 Holly Township Parks Budget.
Is there support?
I'd support it. It's gone down.
So, support by Clerk Winchester, or motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Ruth, to approve the Holly Township Parks Budget as presented. The budget in its totality is $180,000. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
George Colas?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
No.
Pat Feeney?
No.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Number five is the 2018-19 Holly Township Budget and Appropriations, proposed resolution 2018-12. In our last, in the Township Budget Workshop, there were some questions. Karen, you had a last minute injury and weren't able to attend the meeting. And some questions were raised on a couple of areas from that meeting. One of them had to do with the, I'm looking for the original page of that budget. One of them had to do with the change in, let me see what department that was.
I think we had one area where they decreased in the, you had in, the health, you had in switched in two people, wasn't that the issue on that one?
We had, because James talked about and Mark, Mark signed up for.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that was.
Medicare and that reduced.
That was on medical insurance. We actually went over those numbers and the budget calls for a $75,000 figure and we did the hard numbers today, which were 67,000 something. And understanding that a budget is something to draw from, amendments can be made later.
And then we have, in December, then they have usually the increases for the premiums. So we don't know what kind of increase we're gonna have for six months.
Correct. Okay. We had, there was another question, I was looking for my paper, I thought I had it right on top.
Well.
Do you know, there was another line.
Department 255, talk about that.
Well, I was trying to get the, we had questions on a couple of lines I wanted to get out before we hit 225.
Okay.
I picked that up, but how did it kind of end up here? Yes, oh, the other one, we did clarify, the deputy clerk and deputy treasurer, those were reversed.
Right, right.
Should just touch base on that one. And then.
Yeah, that's fixed.
The capital road funds got moved down. Engineering services, that cost went up.
Say anticipate we're gonna be using them for a few things this year.
Gets busier, okay. And then there was a, there was a change, what do you have, metro funds? Oh, we set up a separate line item for the road maintenance. Road graveling, on that. Is that all of them? Okay, so then Department 255 was the issue that wanted to be discussed again. That is on the.
What was the transfer of 55,000?
That is for the well hydrant.
That's right, okay. So Department 255 is the salaries for the general office was 12,000. Salaries for code enforcement assistant two is at 28,000. Then there was zoning administrator cost and then the other social security situat, dues and subs. And Treasurer Freeman brought up the conversation regarding the zoning administrator. Did you want to go over that?
Right, we, we discussed whether having a assistant to the supervisor was really necessary because the supervisor position had been part-time for the past eight, almost nine years, actually. And then a year ago, the supervisor's position was increased to full-time. And that time should be adequate to do the job without any assistance. And so then I brought up the fact that the position that was eliminated in 2009 was the zoning administrator slash building official position. When the recession came in, we eliminated that position to save money for the township, the taxpayers. And we have not refilled that position. During the recession, there wasn't any building going on. So the zoning administrator, zoning administrator slash building official position was absorbed by the clerk's office. So I'm recommending that we reinstate the full-time position for the zoning administrator slash building official and remove the code enforcement officer back to part-time. Eliminate the assistant to the supervisor.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the clerk's department. You're, you're talking about the supervisors. You're talking about the code enforcement assistant to the supervisor is not the clerk's department.
No, no.
Okay.
I'm not saying that.
Not saying that it is.
Okay. I think we do need to do a little further analysis on whether we need to hire a full-time zoning and building person at this point.
We, in our newsletter, it's showing the drastic increase in the number of building permits, which would justify moving that back to its own position, just based on the increase in the volume.
And salaries, have you, and how much is that gonna be?
That was eliminated, what, eight years ago?
It was eliminated at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, 2009.
2009, so nine years ago. Do we know what the volume was and the building was back in 2009?
Much less than it is now.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because that was actually, it was, was a steady decline from, what, 2000, beginning of 2008, all the way through the end of '09.
Well, Mark, Mark, you were on during that time when it was cut. It wasn't cut from the basis that, as we talked in the workshop and I was asking, it wasn't cut because, excuse me, you didn't see the need for the position. It was cut for economic reasons, right? I mean, it wasn't the case of you said, look, this position has no use for us in the township.
It was false.
It was, it was primarily for two reasons. One was that because of the recession, there was a very serious decline in building permits. And the other primary reason was to save money, to be able to cut the budget.
Right, right.
And as I said, in the private sector, more commonly understood is that the most easiest cost to cut and contain is always labor first.
Well, there wasn't enough volume in the building department to justify the position.
Well, that was at that time.
Right, but what I'm saying is, now, now I think there is.
Right.
And that, that before we start creating full-time positions, we should have looked at whether that position should have been reinstated first before we created a new one.
Right.
I mean, to me, that was more logical.
This, this position was created over a year ago, it was on our last budget. And at the time that it was created, Amy was already the code enforcement officer and she was making somewhere in the neighborhood, it fluctuated, of around $24,000 as a part-time position. And when Roger Welch left, there was a $12,000, that's what he was receiving as his title was projects manager.
Right.
So I met with Amy and, and looked at making her code enforcement, which is already under the supervisor, and using her as an assistant because of different meetings and scheduling and it works when I'm in multiple places. And that increase went from the 24 to the salary that was $28,000. And as that position was created, it also allowed us to give her medical insurance because it was, and it was covered by that 12,000 that was there. And the board approved that over a year ago and it's been working well.
Three members of this board were not aware that that was being made into a full-time position, so if you want to go there, we'll go there.
Well, no, well, we can go there because as I came into office, that's fine. As I came into office, I went to Karen, who's the clerk who puts together the minutes, and your past resolutions, the resolution on Roger Welch and resolutions on other employees over the year, have never delineated or clarified what these positions were. I even asked if it needed to have a wage range or if we needed, and she said, no, we don't do this, we just go by resolution. So it was put there, questions weren't asked at the time. It was, it, the numbers were on the paper. I apologize if people didn't understand that.
It was two part-time positions.
It was two part-time positions that got put together and.
The two part-time positions.
Without adding the 12,000 to the 24, which would have put her at 36.
Right, the two part, the two part-time positions were adequate. And they did not include any expenses for health benefits or 401K. Those are new expenses for the taxpayers.
That's correct. And they fall within that $12,000 that was eliminated from the other part-time position. So, I mean, it's a question, you, the board can look at it, you can make the decision, it's there.
I mean, if you're working full-time now and, and the previous eight years, the supervisor was part-time, it just seems like it's totally unnecessary for you to need an assistant. Now, if it's a problem with you not having the skill set necessary to do the job, that's in your cost center for training. Because when your training's done, the expense ends. If you create a position, which you have done, that goes on forever.
But it's, it's not just, it's not an issue of having the skill set. It's an issue of being at two places at one time. It's an issue of coordinating things. She's at the office. You have made it very clear through a letter that you wrote that you will not, you will not tell people when they come in the door where I am. You just simply say, I don't know, he's not here. When I started the job, I would turn to you and say, I'm leaving.
You're totally getting off.
I'm not totally getting off of anything, I'm, you're, you're asking why I need it.
Go ahead, George, go ahead.
You asked why I needed the position or why it was created, I'm explaining it to you. You didn't want to do that, you didn't want to answer to, you didn't want to tell people where I was, you didn't want to entertain people. I know that this position has changed.
Like for the Dickens Festival.
It was a part-time job for 20 years and there was no supervisor in the office, a couple of hours a day, perhaps. It's a different job. I was elected by the people, I've come in, we've got these projects going on, we're changing the roads, we're getting the drainage fixed on the roads. That takes time, that takes meetings. You came to me right away, we've had meetings in Lansing, we're working on a couple of projects that you were concerned about, that existed for eight, eight years without any resolution. We're trying to push those through. Those are the things that are going on.
I'm sure that you can justify everything that you want to do. What I'm saying is.
I'm just explaining it. If the board wants to roll it back and the board doesn't want these projects done, then we can back off. That's up to the board.
If the township survived for the previous eight years with a part-time supervisor and nothing catastrophic happened, then, but now that it's a full-time position, you should easily be able to handle it on your own. You should not be an assistant and the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for it and it shouldn't be a full-time position with the additional expense of health benefits and a 401K. That's expensive and the taxpayers are paying for it.
Mark, the main reason why it was part-time is because that's all he could work. And number two, one of the biggest and most important things is the clerk's office did the supervisor's job. That's why it was part-time.
Karen, Karen, you've said that. And you said that, and we're, we're talking about, but I'm looking at what George has done and I'm trying to think, what did he take from the clerk's office? I would have thought, this is my thought, you don't want to add the position back of the, for the building issue. I would have thought that you would have wanted to give up doing the permits, doing some of the other building issues. That's when I thought, when you were saying you were, that George should have the full-time position, I thought, okay, we're not going to put that position back on, we'll give it to the supervisor to do. Since the supervisor statutory issues are very limited, for the most part. But you didn't give any of those up. I'm still seeing the budget, you get $8,000 for the, your department gets $8,000 for the, to take over the responsibilities of the building official.
No, just the zoning administration.
Just about the zoning. Who does the permit?
Building for free.
Yeah, who does the, so you do the permits for free? Okay. So why wasn't that given to the supervisor? See, now that would have been an issue off your back that I thought, okay, we don't want to, we don't want to create a new position. We don't want to bring that back because of the cost and the up and down in the economy. I'm giving you an argument here, the up and down in the economy. So let's give it to the supervisor to do, until we decide whether we want to bring that person back full-time. That would have been totally acceptable, but I didn't see that goes there. I really thought, okay, the permits and that, that sounds like something, you know, we can move that over to the supervisor, he's working full-time. But that didn't happen. I personally, I don't personally see where the great volume of work has gone to them. I've seen a lot of pet projects have come about. And George, you're right, you've been out there about the roads, you've really gotten the road commission on there. But a lot of these projects were coming down the line at one time or another. North Holly Road, those funds, they've been working their way through for, for a few years now. You know, when the state, when you have US Senator State getting up there and taking credit. I'm telling you right now, it was one of those things, you know, it's great, you giving us the information on what's going on, giving us updates, pointing out to the road commission some of their shortcomings and that. But quite frankly, they're gonna do what they're gonna do. I mean, it's not one of those issues where our, our supervisor's going to change the road commission's plans. You might do, just like any other citizen, you might have a louder voice to speak of because you're being an elected official, but pretty much they're gonna do what they're going to do. And I appreciate you banging the drum and getting it. I, you know, that, these people work, you know, have other lives. I know they can't do it, I know I couldn't do it, I appreciate that. But as it goes for somehow that equates that you need to have an assistant, I, I don't see it. And quite frankly, if what I just said about taking some of that building stuff, if that had gone to the supervisor, I might have considered, okay, you might need an assistant. That might be something, you know, you got the permits coming and things are increasing. That might be something, but I'm not seeing that. What I've seen is we had controversy over how the office was used, how Amy was used in that office, considering the Dickens Festival. It's like, you know, and boy, for us to speak against the Dickens Festival is sacrilege in this town. And I mean, you know, nothing personal against, you know, Dickens Festival, but we.
I've never done one single thing for the Dickens Festival.
Okay, you didn't answer phones, nothing, nothing passed out, okay. That, okay, so, we, so George, you did that, all, all that involved you in the office and not, not your assistant on it, okay.
The phone calls go to my cell phone.
Okay.
They've gone there for five years.
Well, we had it, we had questions about how you used your time. So here's my thing. I like to see the building person come back. And I think a good way of funding it, yeah, there's a couple of ways you could fund it. Eliminate the assistant position, take some of the money back out from the clerk's office. And I think, you know, that would be a pretty good start to getting someone's salary there. To me, that position is more important for our future because our growth and that, we're growing. You know, whether we like it or not, we're gonna become more developed in the next few years. And to have that done properly with someone paying attention to it, you know, and is necessary. it, you know, and is necessary. I'm not questioning what you've done on it. I'm just saying, it seems like a lot, you have, you have the clerk's job, which should go back to being the clerk's job.
And I'm also in charge of the building department, and I think it would have been nice if I would have been asked what my workload is instead of an assumption by
But, but you told, but you told us.
I would have enjoyed that as well.
You told us you were, you told us you were overwhelmed, and that's why we needed to make that.
No, no, I did not. I did not say that.
No, that, you told us, that, do you mean, you, you never made the statement that you needed to, that you were going to stop doing some of the things that should, the supervisors should be doing? That statement was never made. You would, you would have been doing, you would have been, you would have been doing.
Every project that ever came down the pipe, Karen did. Yes.
I've been asked to call for a point of order by the treasurer. Interestingly enough, Karen was speaking when Pat interrupted, but I let it go. I let the conversation come out on, on an element of transparency. I, I think, and, and we're going to disagree, we're going to agree to disagree, but the work that's getting done on North Holly Road, the drainage system, that's been water over the red road since the late 1990s. That water's gone. There was over 500 feet of culvert brought in. Those were because I was down there. They were because I went to Beverly Hills. I met with those people over and over. There was a series of pictures that were taken. The other project, the road gravel coming to Holly Township. Holly Township hasn't had gravel on their roads in over 20 years, and we're doing that now section by section. Other townships across the county have done all of their roads. Rose Township, Groveland Township, they've done them on a regular basis over the years. So, we're changing a lot of the things we're doing. We're changing a lot of the things in the office as we find those too.
All the Farmstead stuff.
The Farmstead, you can ask Harvey Sorenson, he's here.
All of the master planning.
There was no activity going on that moving forward.
This isn't about your job performance.
Well, but you are making it. You're the one that said it.
No, I'm not contesting. We're not contesting your job performance. We're saying that because you're full-time, that's adequate time to do the job without an assistant. That's all we're saying. We're not talking about what you've done or what you're going to do.
Well.
We're saying that you have adequate time to do it as full-time now, and you shouldn't need an assistant, and that I see more of a priority to, like I said, reinstate the zoning administrator, building official position that we originally had. The funding comes out because Karen is currently being paid to do the zoning administration. That funding would move over to cover that.
No, it would not cover that. It's $8,000, Mark. Would the, the person that did that job make, the cost was well over $60,000.
I mean, we've got to respect each other while we're speaking.
And I agree with that. But what is the, what is?
But you're debating me while I'm trying to explain my position.
Let me call order one more time, and I think it's interesting. You said we have to respect each other when we're talking. I was talking, and you, you came in. I let you go, but now you want respect.
Because you're trying to turn, you're off the top.
No, Mark, I'm not trying to go.
It's not about your job performance. I've said that.
You just said it was. You said if I didn't have the job skills, I needed to be trained. You said that the
No, I said if you can't complete the job.
Now, wait a minute. Now, it's my turn. You said that the prior, previous superintendent or supervisor was a part-time job. He got everything done that was needed. The fact of the matter was, there wasn't anything done. It was a part-time position for over 20 years. We get that. I came in different. If you don't like what I'm doing, this board has the ability to stop it, to shut it down. When you talk about the hours that I work, I'm on the road. I work on Friday. I work on Saturday. My phone rang on Sunday. I was in conversation on Sunday with the attorney over these things. So, there's a lot of things the supervisor does. It isn't all about sitting behind your desk and sitting in the office. You come in at nine o'clock every morning. You work your five and a half day.
George, please, this is not, you're trying to get off track again.
I'm not trying to get off track at all. You're the one that brought up my job and whether I'm doing it or to have the ability to do it or not.
No, I'm telling you that.
If you want to entertain a job to replace that, then talk about the salary of that position, the 40 or 50 or $60,000 that will require to put that job back. Currently, we're paying the clerk $8,000 a year to cover that job. There is no retirement there. There is no 401K there. So, so you can bring
No, because, because it's currently being paid to the assistant supervisor, which is an unnecessary position.
No, it's not.
Well, that's, and that's your opinion.
Okay, this isn't about your job performance. It isn't about what you do, and it isn't about how many hours you work. That's totally up to you. It's about the supervisor's position. It doesn't matter who's in the position. What I'm saying is, it's now a full-time position, and whoever is in that position should be able to handle the position without an assistant. That is what I'm saying.
Okay. So, we're back to the issue of the budget and Department 255.
Right, and I've already made my recommendation.
Okay. Are there any other issues within the budget that we want to look at? I'm sorry?
Nothing. I just said everything else pales. I don't have any questions. But we have to figure out some way to end this topic discussion.
Well, there's, there's two things. This is the budget as it's presented. It can, it can come before the board tonight. It can get voted on. It can get approved. It can be amended as we sit tonight. The budget can be amended later. You can come back to another meeting and propose the new job. You can, you can propose to change jobs. You, you made a motion at a previous meeting to eliminate the job. That motion was, at that particular time, did not, that motion failed. So, those things can be done again going forward. You can, you can present and create this, what is it, zoning?
Administrator.
Which should be analyzed and, and the facts should be on, on the table. We can remake those kinds of decisions.
Sure, and, and I can make a motion to approve the budget with amendments, and the amendments can say things like that the assistant to the supervisor would be eliminated by November 1st, and the zoning administrator job begins on November 1st. Those things can be done.
Well.
Sounds good to me.
It'd be nice, and I would be in charge of that person, so it'd be nice if somebody talked to me about it.
You know, this is one of the things, four years ago, that I came forward and I said this board was at a point where it needed, because the township had grown and growth was coming, that we needed two additional trustees on the board, and we did a petition drive, and we lost that at the ballot. But I'm going to tell you, when you have a quorum that's made up of the clerk and the treasurer and the supervisor, we can't sit as an administrative team in the office and talk about these things. I can talk to you about one thing, but if I start that project with you, I can't go to Karen. I can talk about Karen, about other things, and I talk to her about more than I do you because she runs more of what goes on in the township on a daily basis. It is very frustrating. I've talked to other township supervisors, and I've talked to other township clerks, and they have a meeting once a week about what they're doing and where they're going, and they're, and if we had those meetings, there wouldn't be surprises. But unfortunately, because I either have to talk to you on something or I have to talk to Karen, I can never, the, the three of us can't work on a project and come up with a decision to bring it to the board because that's in violation of the Open Meeting Act because we're a quorum. So, there are issues here that have to be looked at. But in this particular case, we're talking about the budget, and, and I'll get the ball rolling. I'll make a motion that we approve the Township Budget and Appropriations 2018, Resolution 2018-12. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. First and foremost, the supervisor should not make motions.
But he can.
But he can, because the supervisor's responsibility is to chair the meeting. If there isn't support on the board for a motion, then the supervisor has to assume that the support isn't there. By the supervisor initiating the motion, the supervisor is trying to basically take charge of the direction of the motion and, and basically implement maybe his own personal agenda.
We have the attorney with us this evening.
I'm not saying you can't make a motion. I mean, I'm saying that generally speaking, supervisors do not make motions, and you can research that on your own.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor. It is support by Clerk Winchester. Is there any other discussion on the topic, on the budget?
Would you please repeat the motion?
It's the 2018-19 Holly Township Budget and Appropriations Proposed Resolution 2018-12. Roll call, please.
The motion is to approve.
Approve the budget as presented.
And, and, and that's because we've got the July 1st deadline. The budgets can be amended as we have seen tonight going forward, and changes can be made, but that's where we're at tonight. So, if we could have a roll call, please.
One other question, just
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify. So, you can, if we approve it as written, at any time, we can go back to any section and have it amended?
Always. Roll call, please.
George Colas.
Yes.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
Pat Feeney.
No.
Mark Freeman.
No.
Okay, motion carries three, two. We will move on to the 2018-19 Boards and Commission meeting dates.
Move to approve, approve the proposed resolution 2018-13.
Are those all Wednesdays?
Yes.
Just like this year.
However, the Planning Commission has moved to July 18th because of the holiday.
So, it's moved by Clerk Winchester? Support?
Support.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's a resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a resolution. I was thinking, no money. Roll call, please.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
Pat Feeney.
Yes.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
George Colas.
Yes. Motion carries. Number seven is to confirm the special assessment for the fire and emergency services.
Uh, one note. The meeting, the PC meeting is the 17th, not the 18th, just so you know.
I'm sorry, what?
The PC meeting is 17th, not the 18th.
Yeah, the 18th was a Wednesday. I started to panic.
Seventeenth, yeah, that's right. Ours is the 18th.
Okay. Number seven is to confirm special assessment for fire and emergency services, proposed resolution 2018-14.
I would move to approve proposed resolution 2018-14.
Support.
It's been moved by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Feeney. Is there any further discussion? None appearing. Roll call, please.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
George Colas.
Yes.
Pat Feeney.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Farmstead garage door replacement. I had the WHAM group out working at the Farmstead a couple of weeks ago on, I think it was a Sunday that they were out, and Amy passed you these out so that you could see this. We went to open the garage door on the south house, and the door fell off. It had rotted, and the, the bars had rusted. I don't know when that door was originally put on, maybe back in the, in the 1950s, early, early 60s, based on the construction of the door. I have put out for three bids to replace the door. Right now, the door's just kind of propped up against the building, so it kind of, kind of sort of deter people from the door being wide open and the things that are in there. We've got one bid in that's before you. You'll see that there's work that needs to be done on the framing and in both inside the building. Karen, you and I went out and looked at it one day so that you had an idea what we were looking at. For a lot of you that don't know, on that south house, it was built in 1838, and the inside is actually beams, hand beams like barn beams that you would see, put together in their mortise, and they have pegs in them and so forth. On the outside, it, it looks more like, a little bit more like a modern house, but on the inside, the construction of that is all the old beams that put it together, but after 100 and however many, what, 180 years or so, and, and the different doors that hung there and so forth with the wood pulling on, that whole section needs to be replaced. So, the bid is here. I don't have the other two bids. I'd like to put them in front of the board, but this, this brings up a secondary topic, and that is, right now, due to, in our policies and procedures, the township supervisor or the clerk can make a decision up to $1,500 for emergency work or something that needs to be done. And obviously, as you see this bid, which is at $5,300 to do the work, there are two more companies that I'm waiting for bids to come in. What I'd like to do tonight, if the board's willing, is to make a motion and pass a motion that may not exceed the number that's in this bid, and when the other two bids come in, we'll take a look at them and, and see what we can do to, as far as money goes in. Otherwise, we'll have to wait until the July meeting to move forward, and that could put the project, the trades right now are so slow that when you talk to them, they'll give you a bid and they tell you, "I'm a month out or two months." It'll be, they're talking July, September before they can get to stuff. So, it's a question of getting it approved and getting it on their list. It's a question of what, what, how the board would like to move forward on this project.
It says painting and ceiling not included. Will that be required?
Where?
Or it says not included, painting, ceiling, electrical?
No, no, it says painting or ceiling, the cedar trim or door.
Right, is that, but it's not included. Is that going to have to be done?
I wouldn't think so, the cedar. Nothing else in there is painted or seat, or, or treated.
Any paint, lead paint and baiting is required?
Um, I don't think, I don't think so. There's, none of that stuff's painted. It's all just original. If you actually go inside that garage, it almost looks like originally it was a barn.
It does.
There's, there's the remains of a stall. I'm guessing at some point, there was a carriage in there and a horse kept in there, and, and it looks more barn-like once you walk in the project. So, this is just replacing a lot of that wood that had rotted and come apart over the years. And I'm assuming that part of the reason it rotted and came apart is you can see where different hinges, different doors over the years have been, been up there.
So, you wanted just to Consider proving that amount so that when the other bids come in, you could act on them.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're looking to do. These names were given to me by Curt and Lumber. These are three guys that do these kinds of projects.
Okay.
So, we've placed a call to them, had them come out, and, you know, we'll take a look when the bids are done, and we'll pick which one seems to make the most sense. If we use this as a ceiling, I can't imagine anybody, I mean, I'll be honest with you. When I looked at the project, I, I thought it would be a 2,500 or $3,000 project, but in all honesty, then you go price the garage doors, and I haven't bought a garage door in a long time.
Right.
So, the prices will surprise you. Any other thoughts or questions? Mr. Feeney? Well, then I'll get it started by making a motion that we approve the supervisor to fix the garage door on the south house, not to exceed the beat of the bid that's in front of us. If we get in the other two bids and they're lower, then we'll look at those and perhaps go that direction.
Support.
So, it's been moved by Supervisor Colas, support by Clerk Winchester. Is there any other conversation? None appearing. Roll call, please.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
Pat Feeney.
No.
Mark Freeman.
No.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
George Colas.
Yes. Motion carries three, two. Farmstead donation agreement. This is in front of you. When we received the donation for the Farmstead, this donation had to be written to a 501(c)(3). That was one of the requirements. The Holly Heritage Farmstead is a 501(c)(3). This donation agreement was produced by the attorney's office so that it gives us a vehicle to receive the money. The check would be written to the Holly Heritage Farmstead, and then this is the agreement between the Farmstead Group and us. What we're approving tonight is the donation agreement to be offered to the Holly Heritage Farmstead for their approval. I've met with Mary Blanchard a couple of times. She knew that this was in the process, and we were putting this together. There are a couple
Really? Yeah, I just interrupted you. That's kind of a false statement there. She knew as maybe the last day or so the full extent of this, so let's back up on saying that, you know.
Mary has her hand up, and, and, go ahead, Mary.
I actually did know that the township was working on something. I did not know it was regarding, excuse me, this donation. I thought it was more dealing with the mission and bylaws, but either way, I, I've read it. Harvey's read it. I don't have an objection to this. The other thing is, is that I do not see an end date on here. Objection is important. I don't have an objection to this. Um, the other thing is, is that I do not see an end date on here, which is important. Um, because I think that there is an end date, we might have to, with it, in terms of the fact that this is dealing with, um, a program bringing farm animals to Farmstead. I don't think we're at that point yet, but I think as it is, I think it's acceptable to Farmstead.
Okay, well, just so you understood, the process was that the board would approve this from our end, give it to you for your people to look at it. You can come back with, with a change. We would go back to the attorney and get it. It's just the beginning of the process.
Okay, George, here's the beginning of the process. Question, first question is, I spoke to some of the board, we had no clue whether this was gonna be an agreement. The money that we're speaking of, was this the anonymous sum that we've been talking about, or is this a new sum? So are we at $200,000 or are we at $100,000?
No, we're at $100,000.
Okay, so this is in the anonymous sum, this is the, you know, here.
Yep.
Okay, and when I spoke about it, is, there's nothing wrong with this agreement, there's nothing wrong with this grant. What is wrong with it is, we have no clue. When I have individual sitting, no, 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 you bring it up here, you put it in the packet, and here it is. What we need, and what I think someone should propose, because I won't propose it because I'll be told I can't do it at this time, is, we need a monthly report, detailed report for me, because you're getting a little off the reservation here. This comes forward, and under the understanding, how long have we've had this check for $100,000 sitting at the township? How long?
Came in first part of May.
First part of May, and we haven't heard about that? You hold a $100,000 check and we haven't heard about that? I have a problem with that. I, very big problem with that. Now, I'm sorry for Mary for, you know, didn't mean to put you on the spot there. There's nothing wrong with I foresee taking this, you know, and doing it this way, but my first perception was, we're approving this tonight, and as Mary will tell you, I call her up, I said, have you guys even talked about this? Have you heard about this money? No. So you had the check, you have spoken to Mary and Harvey, but yet you haven't told them. We've had meetings, you haven't brought that up. Of course, it would be good that we had, uh, a monthly report telling us what's going on. Uh, we all went into this knowing that there were going to be expenses, that were going to pop up, this door, for a good example. Things were gonna come up that, you know, we understood. We opened a tad bit of a tam, a pamper or a box, pardon how I said that, but, you know, that we knew we were getting into it. Mark made that very clear and we all agreed that that was a fact. But, to, you know, well, here it is, here's the agreement. We had $100,000 sitting in town. You are an elected representative. We should have known. Now, to say we'll deal with it at this month's meeting, that's fine. But, you know, and it's no violation of the Open Meeting Act. All they had to done was said, we have this money, at a future meeting, we're going to figure out what we're gonna do with it. Inappropriate that that wasn't. If I was the Farmstead Committee, of course, they're much more sensible people than myself, just on principle. You know, not, well, here, here's the agreement, here's what we're doing, you know, kind of after the fact type thing, you know. I didn't really make you part of it. You were guessing, just like everybody else. I, am I mistaken, Mary, that you thought this might have been the $100,000 anonymous sum money too? You weren't sure where it was coming from? And then like, and what happened to that anonymous amount of money? Cause that's what, we were under the impression, well, that's coming, they don't wanna speak up about it. I, can I make a motion here? Can I make a motion that we require the supervisor to give us a monthly detailed report of what's going on? I mean, I think, yeah, I'm, I know. Yeah, you're, you're the one that keeps me in line, Mark, I understand that.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, but you understand, and could it be on the next agenda? Or do I, you know, have to go through the game? I'll fill out a piece of paper, then I get my packet, well, of course, it's not on there. Then I get accused of riling people up because, sorry, we couldn't get it onto the agenda. You know, this is nonsense, plain and outright nonsense. $100,000 sitting there. That's just BS. We should know about it. And that really, I, I don't know, and don't, I don't want this played that, oh, you know, he's gonna throw this away, you know, this funding. No, it's great, fantastic. I'm glad to see it. But, you know, we get our packet. I speak, yes, and I did, and I only spoke to one person, and I wanted a few people here, and I asked, do you know what this is about? Are we approving the language? Are we approving it, the actual accepting it? And the answer was, I don't know. That should not be. That absolutely should not be. There should have been some explanation in our packet stating, well, this is the language. So, I mean, there is no violation by giving out information that, well, this foundation gave us the money. There's no violation in that. Granted, we couldn't talk about what we'd wanna do with the money or anything, or how we're gonna vote on it, if we're gonna accept it, but to have $100,000 sitting there. And here's a good point. That, now, I probably shouldn't bring it up, but the fact of the matter is, we have people out here concerned about other issues, and they're looking at the way this is handled, and they expect a positive result from us when we can't even get one. We as a board, until tonight, did I get a clear picture exactly what was going on? No. You know, well, okay, that's great, and I'll, I'll tell you, it could be accepting the money, it could not be accepting the money. We might have another $100,000 out there, I don't know. Nonsense. Just other nonsense. And beam me out of order, do whatever you shall please, but you know what? Some of this disruption in this is because we have nonsense like this. It angers us. You know, they did not come here to hear job performance. They did not come here to hear me complain about you. Sorry, and I apologize for that. What they came for was straight honest answers. How's their money being spent? Clear, transparent. This is not transparent.
I, I don't know what more you would want in transparency.
Transparency, George, you have $100,000 sitting in the office. Where's the transparency?
Ten minutes to talk, uninterrupted. Now, can I respond, or no?
What? Let's hear your job performance again. Let's get up at the grandstanding. I ask you a fact, where's $100,000 sitting in the office for, since May? Nonsense. Other nonsense.
I announced that we had a donation of $100,000 coming quite some time ago. Amy can tell you, I've met with Mary on a couple of occasions. We've talked about it, we've talked about the structure, the charter that they had so that we could put it together, so that we had an agreement, a working relationship between the Holly Heritage Farmstead and the township. Prior to this, the Holly Heritage Farmstead has been on that property doing work, and there's been no written agreement as to what their parameters were, what these parameters were, nothing that the board ever approved. So that's the process we're going through. When you accuse me of not being transparent, the whole purpose of putting it on the agenda, having the attorney draw it up, is for transparency. We bring it to the meeting so we can have a discussion about it. The process is, we look at what the attorney has prepared, we put it together, we agree. Once we agree, we present it to the Farmstead. They're gonna look at it, they're gonna come back, and they might have a problem here and here. We'll amend that, we'll go back, and we'll create something that works for everybody. So I don't, I don't know what more you want in the way of transparency. We've made these announcements. I've, we've talked about this to people, and it's, and it's out here, and we've been working on it. Mary's been in my office a half a dozen times. On, on this particular agreement, that's why we put it on the thing, on the agenda.
Okay, George, number one, why do we not have a, if we're gonna have disagreement with the Holly Heritage Foundation, where is it? That should be the first thing to be done. We're gonna approve something here and we're gonna pass it along to an organization that we don't necessarily have, which you're saying, a set relationship, cause we don't know the rules between the Holly, and that should have been first and foremost. First time, you know, you've spoken to people. Well, yeah, that's great. We all, we all know how that goes. We'll find out from the street on something, you know, um. I go back to the fact, simple, basic fact. You had the money sitting there. Some of us were under the impression that this was a $100,000 coming from an anonymous sum that didn't wanna be mentioned, you know. Now, it's a foundation.
No, it is anonymous.
It is anonymous.
It's coming from a foundation, right?
It's, they still don't want it known, so that makes it anonymous. The, the lawyer got the paperwork and they're putting it together.
So we shouldn't be mentioning the name of the foundation? Okay, so...
You, you can do what you want, nobody can stop you.
Uh, George, you portrayed it as being an individual who gave the money. Never heard the foundation word used in it.
It's in here.
It's, it's in here, which is funny, where he's had the letter since February, and this is the first time we've seen it? All right, you know, course I'm wrong, you're right, George, let's move on.
Okay, so we have the Farmstead donation agreement in front of us. Are there any areas that you wanna discuss that you wanna tweak?
Should ask for a motion first, then discussion?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I would make a motion to accept and approve the donation agreement from the foundation to Holly Township for $100,000.
Support.
Now, discussion.
The foundation, and the purpose is to help teams learn and grow knowledge about farm life and to experience hands-on training with farm animals. Quite a different topic, I think, for, for grant money. Uh, how do we envision that happening, or who's gonna do that?
Well, just to understand, and why this got accelerated to the point it did, was because they had to write that check by April 15th. So, and, and it was an individual that came into my office.
For tax purposes.
Pardon?
For tax purposes.
For tax purposes. So that accelerated it. When they called, they had to have a 501(c)(3), and that's when, that's where the, the Holly Heritage Farmstead comes in. They couldn't write the check directly to the township. Um, they actually flew into town, made a phone call to me. They were 10 minutes away from wheels down, could we get together? So I did. So the money's there. This is in conjunction with, um, as we move forward on the Farmstead and the, and the work with the 4H and the work with that kind of program. You know, the bottom line is, if we don't execute and we decide not to go that direction, we send the check back. You know, but this enables us to receive the check, um, in with an agreement between them. So that's why I turned to the attorney and asked for this to be created. There are a couple of, uh, there's a is and an at that needs to be switched, and, um, once it goes to the, um, Farmstead Committee, they will take a look at it with any, um, recommendations that they have from their board and bring it back to us.
So this could not be used for repair of the barn, for example?
Pardon?
This could not be used for repair of the farm?
We couldn't use it to fix the issue with the barn at the moment, could we?
I don't, yeah, I'm just...
Yeah, no, that's, that's the way I would read that.
It's more of an educational fund.
And where, when we accept this, what fund does that go into? Do you know that, Mr. Freeman, would that be a separate fund for that, or?
It gets reseeded into Farmstead, right?
Into the Farmstead...
No, I would put it in, uh, the trust and agency.
TNA?
Is that for, like, long-term?
It's a holding account for special funds.
Right, when you're holding funds, when we're holding funds for someone else to be distributed at a later date. It's called trust and agency. And you create a new GL number for it? Okay.
So basically, if those funds are not used and are still in our control, there, there are, there are a few termination agreements here. If something would happen to Farmstead or the foundation, is that money, who does the money go back to?
The donor.
But if you spend it all, are you liable to send, if something happens, you have to send it back, or you have to repay? It doesn't say so.
I'm taking grant to mean grant. Anything, anything that's been spent has to be spent on, under the terms of the, of the grant. Any, if the, if the, if the Farmstead terminated, which is unlikely, but if it did, any remaining funds would have to be refunded back.
I'm just, the only concern, one of the concerns I have is, is how we would spend it, depending on what, what kind of programs we would propose, who would, who would run those.
Well, that's the, that's what's part of that master plan.
Yeah.
Okay. The presentation on the master plan, some of this money could be used to fund the things that they're suggesting.
And it can be used for building facilities and building things that are needed to help...
To educate.
Yeah.
Help implement that.
Okay, so it's a mo, the motion is to accept or to approve donation agreement as shown here?
Correct.
To be presented to the Farmstead Committee.
I would hate to give up $100,000, or anything.
Motion's on the table.
Any other discussion? I don't think I, I don't need a roll call, I, nope. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10 is a counter offer to purchase parcel number 0128303002. Mr. Freeman, you wanna handle that?
You have the...
Damn, I never got the, it was on my list.
Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll just read the letter into the record. This is a letter from Kent, Ken Brant, who had previously made an offer on parcel number 0128303002 that Holly Township owns as a result of a tax forfeiture. Uh, thank you, Mr. Freeman, for your counter offer on the parcel at Grange Hall Road of $30,000. After further discussion, we'd like to retry an offer at $18,000. Genesee Community, uh, let's see what that...
Credit.
Credit, excuse me. Genesis Credit Union really wanted to create a parcel for you to create a future project to help increase the viability and the tax increase for Holly Township.
What was the first offer they made? Like five?
Five thousand, I think. Right. So they've made a counter offer of $18,000.
Just about halfway through?
Was it five thousand the first one?
It was a second.
First, they offered a dollar.
I was saying, didn't they offer a dollar in the beginning?
Right, which we rejected.
Yeah.
Then they offered 5,000, and we countered off, countered with 30,000, and they now have, uh, issued an offer for 18,000.
Let me turn to the township attorney. You and I've had a conversation in the past. Is there a procedure we are required to go through when selling property, um, owned by the township?
There's a, there's a special process for surplus property. Honestly, I can't say if there's a special process.
It has to be by resolution, I know that.
Well, yeah, it does, I mean, it has to be by resolution, but as far as you're, you're asking, like, is there a need? Why you're getting rid of it, those kind of things, I think generally...
Well, I didn't know if there was a process, like, it has to be appraised, or we have to go through this step?
No, 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 as far as the dollar amount, no.
Okay.
I, I guess I'm trying to recall, there's this section about surplus property and having to make a determination that you don't, it's, you don't need it for public purpose anymore. And that all can be put in whatever resolution is passed.
Such as a fire station, you're selling it because it's not...
It's no longer needed, yeah, for the purpose, but for which you purchased it. There's no legal requirement that you do anything by way of an appraisal.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were clear that...
And the offer is from the people that own the credit union?
Property.
Property, okay.
Yeah, this, this property we're talking about is on the corner of Grange Hall and Fish Lake. It's on the northeast corner. And this parcel is a strip that was actually an access road going to the property behind it, and it fell to back taxes, and the township got it from the county, um, that way. The appraised value at the time was...
Oh, it's ridiculous, cause it has frontage on Grange Hall Road.
What was it, 64,000, I think, or something?
But you couldn't build anything on Grange Hall Road, so it's not...
Well, this part, that parcel is difficult on its own to build anything on.
Anything.
Their intention is to combine it with the corner parcel that they already own.
Sure.
I mean, we've got, we've talked about that before. We can't ask them who they're selling it to, but obviously, with them coming back, my guess is they probably got somebody who's already interested in it, along with that piece there.
Yes, I can't tell you who it is, but I can tell you that...
My, my thinking is, at this point in time, it's a...
The sales contingent upon them purchasing this and combining.
Right. My contention is... My contention is now that, you know, look, part of our master plan is to see that corner developed. We have somebody who obviously is interested in doing something at that corner. The money, thanks to Mr. Ruth wanting to go back, is considerably more, and that's all profit for us, even though the dollar would have been a profit, eighteen thousand sounds a lot better. You know, I think it's something we should take at this point in time.
The attorney want to make a comment?
If I can just make a comment, just for future reference or perhaps for purposes of this discussion. The township board can, the Open Meetings Act allows the township board to go into closed session to discuss the purchase of property up until the point of purchase agreement is signed. Obviously, the purpose is so that you can keep these discussions not to the seller.
From a negotiating standpoint, keep it private.
Right.
Good point.
The situation is a little different because we had not listed the property, and we're not actively trying to sell the property, and we received an offer on the property.
Oh, I apologize. I'm thinking it's purchase. Purchase of property, you can go into closed. Sale of property, you cannot. You were right, Mark.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're way ahead now at eighteen thousand, and I think we have Mr. Ruth to thank for that, because I would have settled for five thousand, figuring that would get us moved along, but I think the eighteen thousand sounds good to me.
Make a motion.
I make the motion that we accept the offer of eighteen thousand for, I don't have the number right in front of me there.
Parcel, zero-one-two-eight-three-zero-three-zero-zero-two.
Like he said. For eighteen thousand dollars. Sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve sale of zero-one-twenty-eight-three-oh-three-zero-zero-two for a sale price of eighteen thousand dollars. Motion by Pat Feeney, is there support?
Support. I thought you were going to hold out for more.
Support by trustee.
I would have, except you were so passionate.
Support trustee. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
George Cullis?
Uh, no.
Karen Winchester?
No.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Pat Feeney?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Motion carries, three-two. Okay, then we go down to number eleven, the proposed settlement agreement.
How do we begin?
Well, this is a topic that was discussed, human resource, in closed session. The board came out of closed session and made a motion to move forward and create a settlement agreement, and that was done through the attorney's office, and it was presented to the employee, and it's in front of you now, based on that meeting and those decisions, for final approval.
Okay, comment that I would have, a question basically, or it seems to me, what I've heard is that Amy is a full-time employee, and based on the hours that were worked, and if that's, if she worked the number of hours, that's, that's a done deal. Full-time employee, I'm just basing that on what I've heard. I've never seen her act. And if that is true, then there's no need to even have agreement that indemnifies both of us against each other. So, I mean, I don't think there's a need for you to do this. That's my comment.
Maybe the attorney could explain to us why she thinks that negotiating this settlement is in the best interest of Holly Township.
Well, without going into attorney-client privileged communications, there is a concern that the employee was paid for sick pay, or, uh, sick pay, I believe. Vacation pay.
No, sick pay.
Sick pay, you're right.
Sick pay when she wasn't entitled, but she wasn't paid for six years of pension and/or sick, vacation pay that she would have been entitled to. And that was the facts that led into the discussion that we had in attorney-client privileged communication. And if you want to revisit that, I would suggest then you table it, we go back into closed session, and we have those discussions again, so that I can relate to you the, I mean, I guess the same information, the risks and liabilities, in accordance with the attorney-client privileged communication that I provided to you at the last, at the last time we discussed this.
Are you saying that you've re, you reviewed the timesheets to verify that, that the employee worked full-time?
I, I did not. I'm, I'm operating under the facts that were provided to me, but my understanding is it didn't have to be full-time for the pension and the vacation.
What do you mean by that?
Under your policies, a part-time employee is entitled to vacation pay, half of what a full-time employee would get.
Yes.
So the fact that an employee was part-time entitled that person to vacation pay.
We're not talking about vacation.
Sick pay.
We're talking about sick pay.
We, we talked about, we, we're talking about both. We're talking about two different sides of this. We're talking about the township paying sick pay when it shouldn't have, but not paying vacation and pension when it should have. That's what we're talking about.
Because you're talking about previous fiscal year.
That's correct.
And that the...
I'm going to sug, I'm really very uncomfortable with this being done.
I'd like to make a motion that we take the township attorney's recommendation and have this tabled and go into closed session later to discuss it.
Support. When you say later, it's the last thing on the agenda.
Well, no. Do it now, or?
Next agenda. Move it to the next agenda.
Is that the motion?
Next month.
That's the motion.
Okay, Mr. Ruth made the motion. Is that your motion?
Uh, I don't have a preference on the timing. It's fine now, or to go next month is fine as well. Somebody wants to make a motion on the timing, let's do that.
Make a motion that we make it for next month's meeting?
Okay. So...
Or amendment to his motion, I guess would be.
That's okay with you, Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion with an amendment to table this and put it on the agenda for the next meeting, closed session. Motion by Steve Ruth, amendment by Pat Feeney, is there support?
Support.
Okay. Get everybody involved. Support by Freeman and for Winchester. Is there any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will enter into our last public comment. Please remember to state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Brenda Bennett. I live at five nineteen Dot Side Circle, Holly. I'd like to thank Patrick for bringing up the four twenty-five that I filed back in April, and we discussed it at the last meeting. You were absent.
Yeah.
But we had discussed it, and you said it was proper business adequate, or etiquette, to go to the village and discuss with them dissolving the committee of the four twenty-five, and that you would have answers for us at the next four, or at your next board meeting. And we weren't even on the agenda. And I did appreciate Patrick for bringing that up. I don't want this tabled down, just put under a shelf. I would like to see some results from my township, at least voting and accepting my four twenty-five, or not mine, the Villa of Riverside, our community. We would like to see that filed with the, with the township being, you know, accepted. That's what we would really like to see. Because we don't want to be up in the air. We don't want to come down here a year later and say, hey, village is trying to take us over again. Why? We, we don't want that.
I, I apologize for standing up. I'm having a charlie verse in this leg, and it won't let me sit, so first of all, just so you understand why I had to get up.
Yeah, we've been in here for two hours, so...
So anyway, we did what we said we would do at the last meeting. We took it to the village. The village then took it to their board. They brought it forward. It'll be on the packet for the next meeting. It was a timing issue. They just didn't get back to us in time, but they...
You just got with them on Tuesday. Today is Wednesday.
I know, but the packet was done on, over the weekend, and I didn't get the information from them. In fact, Patrick...
So you got with them the previous Tuesday, last week, not just yesterday?
Right, but they didn't take it to their board. I mean, I got with them right after the meeting. I told them what happened in our meeting. Jerry put it forth, and he said he would take it.
Because I got word that the president of the village didn't hear a word about it. So, it's all hearsay, though.
I know, but I wasn't at the council meeting, but it's my understanding it was brought up at the council. Is there anybody that was at that?
It was discussed. Jerry Walker, village manager, made the recommendation that they no longer proceed with that at that time, and that there was no action to be taken, because there was no proceeding, proceeding, is the way it was presented.
And what's the proper procedure is about getting this voted into the township, because last month we had a tie.
Can I ask the question? You're saying voted in, are you wanting the four twenty-five to happen?
No, no, no. She wants...
No, I want it accepted, our petition that we drew up. They haven't acknowledged it, the township.
No, your petition was acknowledged at the last meeting.
It was, you guys voted on it. What was that you voted on?
My proposal was that we withdraw from the committee and we say we're out of the committee. That was my proposal. That was...
But I thought you had to vote on accepting that, and then it was a tied vote.
It was part of the...
Part of the record.
Part of the record.
When your petitions came in, they put it in the consent agreement, it was brought down.
It's, it's part of the record.
Yeah, but it's part of the record. That's, that's already been accepted by the township. That's there. But you want some action taken on.
Okay, but I, I just want to know that I can rest the residents there at Villas of Riverside, I can go to them and say, we're safe for at least twenty years. Is that true or not?
You can say twenty years, but you can... So you want the lang, you want us to accept the language of the proposal that says we don't want this done?
Right.
That's what you want? Okay. Because we're under the impression you're saying you have to accept our petition, which physically, accepting the petition doesn't make, doesn't mean we have to do anything on it.
It doesn't mean anything, but we want to make sure that they cannot take our property and make it part of the village.
Well, just so you understand, there, there had been no conversation about the four twenty-five for over a year, and as I explained to you before, nothing can be done on the four twenty-five. The village has, has, has ended it. They're not doing anything. That was the recommendation, that's what they accepted.
So that petition just sits there unless needed? Am I correct?
Correct. Your petition has been entered into the record, and we have it on file. That's why it was on the agenda at the last meeting. If this board wanted to make an official to dissolve the committee, the committee's virtually dissolved by the, because we weren't only on the committee by the request of the village. If this board felt more comfortable in saying that committee's done, we can certainly put it on the next agenda. But it was, it was quelled by the village, and they're sending us a letter which would go with your petition on record.
So could I have that put on the agenda for next month?
Sure.
Okay.
When I get the letter, we'll put it on the agenda.
Because we'll be in here again, one of us, from the board.
I was going to say, you're not going to like the next part, because I know where Mark's going with this.
We can rescind our current four twenty-five committee, and then it's eliminated. But I can't sit here and tell you that in the future, another board, maybe with even different members, may create another four twenty-five committee, and it goes back on the table again. That could happen. I'm not saying it will.
But do we, as residents, the taxpayers, do we have a right to know if we're going to be taken over by the village? Do we have a say in that?
Absolutely. All of that has to go, they'll have to have meetings, they'll have to have public hearings where the public comes...
And they would let the public know.
We, we let them know on everything they've done along the line.
We're legally required to have a public hearing, and then the public comes and all their comments become part of the public record, just like we had a public hearing tonight on the budgets.
I, I told, I told you and a couple of other people what happened way back, I think it was right after I came in office, when they made their first presentation. I want to say it was in December, maybe January, and I checked the notes to be sure. And at that time, the presentation they made to us, and that's part of what killed it, was I said, why on earth would we want to do that? You've, you've come forward with nothing that gives us reason to want to do that. And it pretty much ended the conversation for over a year, until it got, until the rumor got out there that something was happening.
Because everybody's really...
Other than a rumor.
I understand that. Well, and I'm sorry that this is...
When the village manager reappointed someone, had someone reappointed to the committee, that's not a rumor, that was a fact. And that's what these, and the village manager seems to have been driven to bring this back up, and I'll make it quite clear. Not a lot of talk from people, from someone who lives in the village, not a lot of talk from people in the village about the whole thing. This was all an administrative much. And the fact of the matter is, all these people are asking for, and I think what you really want, we can't promise in the future, but if they were to try it in the future, they'd have to reform the committee. I think the point, when I've talked to other people, eliminate the committee in the future. If they want to try it again, they have to reform the committee, and they got to do that publicly. You can't, and that's all these people are asking for.
Everything and anything they do.
And I don't see why it's become such a complicated issue myself. I'm sorry for taking up your time. It was inappropriate for me to be speaking at this length.
No, that's fine.
I seem to do way too much of that, and I apologize.
I like hearing your input, so how can we see about having this committee dissolved in the township?
I just told you, we will put it on, I'll get the letter from the village. I just told you, we will put it on the next agenda.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Mr. Engelberg? Oh, I'm sorry, John, I saw your hand late. You want to, you go ahead and let John go. Go on. John, go ahead. He's there.
John, um, two hundred and saygo, village, township. I was just wondering what people, but first of all, I recognize that the village people share services with, take care of taxes, take care of pensions, and...
Thanks.
But I was wondering what the percentage of taxes that paid by the village give to the township, versus the people outside of the village to the township? And I realize that, you know, the fire, you know, it's going to be charged, and the state troopers are paid out of it.
No.
No, state troopers aren't paid out of it.
How do they get paid?
By the state.
By the state. It's by all of us, yes. By default, we have the state police.
Through our state taxes.
Wait, wait, I just wondered what the percentage was.
Mr. Freeman?
I can, I'd have to look to see, but the, the tax base of the outer township exceeds the tax base of the village. Obviously, you're looking at thirty-three square miles versus three, two and a half square miles of the village, but the village has more commercial base.
But the value outside of the village is higher?
Correct. The tax will...
That's the basis for the percentage?
Correct.
Mr. Engelberg?
Tony Engelberg, one of the council. First of all, to the folks here from Holly Hills, I am going to light the bullet and take responsibility for the fact that some of the stuff that was brought out on the agenda tonight, I only have three minutes to talk, and I want to talk about a couple of other things, so feel free to stow me out in the parking lot, and I'll explain the reasons why, but as chairman, I'll say the buck stops with me, and I'll give you guys an explanation once we get done. I'm in real trouble by what's gone on here tonight. You guys gave the parks their budget, but the parks director not even knowing the courtesy to show up. Our parks are in the state of Missouri. There is trash all over Sorensen. I don't know what the money you guys give or is going. There needs to be a change in parks director, and the only way that's ever going to happen is if we don't approve the budget. Because if we don't approve the budget, she doesn't get paid. It's a complete disgrace that we go into that, and then what you guys have done to Amy tonight, I, I can't, I, I got my words. First of all, can you give her her dang money that she's owed? I mean, you guys want to go back and forth about vacation versus sick pay versus whatever? She was here, she was doing the work. She was doing the work. We're a small-town community. Do the right thing. Okay, I don't want to...I don't give a rat's rectum about policies, procedures. Do the right thing. The one thing that fires me up the most, and it normally happens in the village. I haven't gone off like this in a council meeting before, and I'm probably going to hear about it later. It's not about being right. It's about doing right. And I've said it again and again. If you guys want to question how much work George is putting in, how much work Amy's putting in, I guarantee you that can document their hours and how they're spending their time. And it's not based on...okay? If you want the township represented properly, if you don't want to go back to a supervisor who's only in his office two hours a day, things are working right now. Things are happening. The public is pretty, for the most part, pretty pleased that the way things are going. There is no need for this bickering back and forth. You guys are talking about a fractionally small amount of money. I don't hear anybody from the public standing up and questioning Amy's job performance or whether their tax money is going. Why are we doing this? All of us are sitting back here right now looking like fools. We're looking dysfunctional. We're looking like we're doing this, and that's not how public council is supposed to be. And for the first time, as a member of...an appointed member of the township government, I'm kind of ashamed tonight. And if I was Amy, I'd think I'd...she's going to have a lot more patience than I would, because I had my reservation with her on the first thing, and I'm more in relation to her. It's disgraceful, and that's all.
I got a couple of hands in the back. I've got one over here. Ma'am, we'll start with the ladies first.
Can I talk about anything, even though it wasn't on the...
Yes, ma'am. You just need to start.
Hi, everyone. My name is Denise Kentu, and I live at...okay. I live 15600 Falk Road. And my husband and I moved out to Holly just over two years ago. I'm kind of worried because I don't want to...just over two years ago, because our boys grew up. They moved out, and we wanted to downsize, so we found a tiny little house on Falk, in dirt road, beautiful trees. We love it. And then, six months ago, there were tree trimmers out there, but they ended up not being tree trimmers. They were land surveyors. And that was...it was...anyways, that's when we found out...okay, hold on. So, thirty years ago. Thirty years ago is a very long time, and that's when this all started. And a lot of things have changed. It's time to protect what matters most. So, this is the reason I'm standing tonight, because I came to the last meeting, and something's been bugging me since that meeting. And it's because what's been bugging me is, at the last meeting, I heard numerous times by quite a few people that they are really nice, and they being manufactured homes. Okay. To me, that's not the point at all. That doesn't have anything to do with all of our concerns. I wouldn't care if they were made of straw or gold. In fact, I'm pretty sure they may all be nicer than my home. I believe my home is a manufactured home, turned into a cabin. It's kind of what it looks like to me. We lived there for two and a half years now, and I love it. So, I don't care how nice they are. The point of all this is that they want to put way too many homes on such a dense area right on top of the aquifer that supplies all the water to our Holly Township residents, just to teep them more. It's just mind-boggling to me, after reading through a lot of the information Marcus Stacey Taylor has spent the last six months researching, that this was ever approved. It was denied over and over, and when it all comes down to it, big money won. But that doesn't make it right, and I also believe that everyone in this room knows that it's not right. That's a little bit. The developer of this manufactured home community doesn't care about any of us, not any of us. All they care about is making more money. So, I think we can protect our groundwater. It's up to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Another gentleman...oh, I got another one.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hogan. I'm at 112 Burns Drive. Thank you for having us here. Thank you, Pat, for adding it to the agenda, because I think we're all pretty shocked that we spent two hours here a month or so ago talking about this. And I think all of us feel like this is just being pushed under the carpet, and we're being called whiners or roller rousers or whatever. So, but the basic issue here is, you know, you've got people that are pack taxpayers that have a major issue with this. I have to make a difference with you, Pat. I'm one of the people that's going to stand up and say, "We're going to stop it." We don't know it can't be stopped. There was an error made by your predecessors, a clerical error. And a lot of this dysfunction happening in this meeting is concerning me, that we have a consistent problem with this. Until the attorney takes a look at it, I don't know if it's this woman or not, but somebody needs to take a look at this and see what our options are here. We don't know it can't be fought. We know it was a clerical error. Okay, but why can't we look at this? Why isn't it on the agenda? Why isn't this being addressed? We have issues with the infrastructure there, with water, the septic, the natural resources. We have proof that their septic has failed. The township supervisor before said this was going to be a catastrophic failure, and it was. And here we sit, and our hands are tied. Well, goddamn, our hands are not tied until we sit back and say, "We're not going to do anything." And we're not going to sit back and say, "We're not going to do anything." We're going to fight this. The people that live on Falk Road are being devastated. Don't tell us it's not going to affect our property taxes. It's gonna. It's going to affect our property values. Nobody wants to live across the development with four hundred houses jammed in there that they can touch each other. So, we've got water. We've got septic. We've got infrastructure issues. Have we even addressed what's going to happen to the kids there? There's cars piled up on East Holly dropping off their kids. There are thirty, forty kids standing there on a fifty-five mile an hour road, and we're going to add another hundred kids, two hundred kids standing there? There's no thought being put behind us. We have proof that it's leaking into that wetland. There's been lawsuits about it for years. It's probably leaking into the Shahuwasi River, though. I think we need to be vocal about this. I think we need to get the other townships involved. We need to get that water tested. Got eighteen thousand dollars here, guys. Let's get the water tested, the least you can do for us to fight this. We have a voice, and we're not going to stop. If I have to go to Colin Walz and talk to Colin about this in Springtown Township, I will. I own a home there, too, on the Shahuwasi River basin. I don't want that going to my house there either. No one wants their waters, their wells polluted here. It's a major issue. There's some social media that suggests, "Well, why don't we just have them hook up to the Holly water supply?" Okay, well, we all hear horror stories about this, nor can we force them to do it. So, what do we do? We allow them to do this? No, we're not going to stand by and do it. Thank you for listening.
Is this with the planning commission right now?
I'm sorry.
Is this with the whole village? Okay. Do you understand that the planning commission has to go first, do all their studying, and then come to the board with their recommendations? So, believe me, we'll look at it.
Well, it was supposed to be on the agenda, and it wasn't added.
It wasn't?
Sounds like a consistent problem.
No, not on the township board agenda, maybe on the planning commission.
We...Tony, who is not here, Tony. Oh, I'm sorry, Tony.
Tony stayed tonight.
Tony, did you ask for it to be on the agenda?
I was...that's what I was...
It was there.
Not really. I'm not...not kind of out of order for me to talk right now.
Okay.
There was some miscommunication.
So, just so you know, we are working on this mat wheel with the fire departments, working with the engineers on that. It's my understanding that the letter just came out, that he just received the letter, was it yesterday or today, from them regarding some of the questions. We have been in contact with DEQ, which is the people that take over the water. This was a lawsuit that Holly Township fought in court in the early 1990s. I think the one lady alluded to some clerical error that was made. When we get that information, along with the actual...
There's a text back here.
I'm sorry? When we get the actual court...we have the actual court decision on that. When we get the other information, we were...it was our intention was to forward it on to the attorney, just for an opinion, to ask her if there's anything else that we can do. It is a very frustrating situation. It was a case back in the...did it start in the late eighties or ninety? Nineteen ninety?
I don't know the exact date.
Early eighties.
Early eighties.
Yeah. It was before any...
Nineties, seventy-nine.
No, it started back in seventy-four.
I would say it started long before any of us were here.
They were with the supervisor.
Were in this party.
But we're still here, and we still care.
And we don't care about garage doors, George. We care about the community. So, once you get resigned...
I understand.
...that your hands are untied, then maybe we'll start listening to you. But maybe until then, you need to resign.
Okay, please. All right. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Ruben Kentu. I live at 15600 Falk Road. And I was given the task to monitor or view eighteen hours of recorded meetings that were taken for this manufactured home apartment. In one portion, a man named C.R. Humphreys presented to the board to be entered into the file an EPA study that said that there were numerous elements, compounds, and things that were coming out of the discharge. So, I tried to find his report, and I found a report by the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, that did studies of the effluent water, the discharged water that's going into the swamp. And this report said that there's at least three hundred and sixty common...they were identifying three hundred and sixty commonly-used elements and compounds in the discharged water. The thing that they were stating, though, that was that the entire United States, almost every city uses these SPRs, the sequential batch reactors, to clean the water before they discharge it. The EPA said that, in this report, that to expect the sequential batch reactors to emit only H2O is a fantasy. Because of the three hundred and sixty identified compounds and elements, they found caulk, sealants, coatings, flame retardants, paint, varnish stains, cleaning agents, oil, fuel, antifreeze, fertilizers, it goes on and on. Opioids, medicines, toxin, neurotoxin. Yes, I did say opioids. They found opioids in one hundred percent of all tested waters. This is what's going in that wetlands. The pristine wetlands, all these things are going to be found there. We need testing. We need to have these waters tested a lot more than what...of all eighteen hours of...that I viewed of these films, of these meetings, there was some language to have the Kernan water tested, but none on the eventual site where they're discharging all the...none. I mean, there's a lot we got to do on that, and so, that's my side. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment, too. Come on up. Especially to Lisa, and water testing. You know, we haven't had a chance, or I haven't had a chance to review this stuff, but water testing is okay. But if it comes out good, that doesn't do anything. You really got to...we got to really make sure...
Well, I don't think it does.
Well, but as I was saying, you got to make sure the system can even think about that handling. What else can we do to the system to handle the new three hundred, whatever the number is?
No, one hundred and fifty homes.
Additional?
Yes. Two seventy-four going with four fifty rising additional. Phase three has not been drawn up yet, so we have no exact number.
Phase two.
Okay. My name is Mark Taylor, 15566, and the first thing I'm going to say is I am never running for public office. A little more to crap you guys go through.
I've said that before, too.
Okay, I'm going to kind of just do a quick overview. I'm the head voice, or whatever you want to call me, of basically the old fight to try to make it right. Say Falk Road. I do it on Falk Road. You...whether the engineers want to say it, or Oakland County wants to say it, you're going to devastate my road, period. It's going to be paved. It's going to be...we're trying to make it a natural beauty road. I would invite everybody here, including the board members, if you have not, the documents I'm going to suggest you read came from the Holly Township file, which is about that thick...and I brought it down to about this thick.
Two feet.
The first one would be a 1999 letter from Booth Patterson that was actually beginning to generate from John Love, who's a very intelligent man right here. The second one would be a Lambert letter, who was Jesse Lambert, our supervisor. We have copies of all of these. If you'd like copies of them, then feel free to make as many copies as you want to pass around. This is really good information about what went down back in the day. The problem is, is nobody here was in this fight. I mean, John was, and John wasn't. Basically, two people in this room that were involved in this fight back in the day. This is twenty, thirty, eight, forty years ago. So, please read these. The Booth Patterson letter, the attorney's letter, the Lambert letter, Ruth Johnson's letter fighting it in 1992, who was our Oakland County Commissioner, the Boyd Kernan lawsuit, who still sits on the planning commission and has for forty-plus years his individual lawsuit to keep them from dumping their wastewater into a wetlands. Does anybody here even think that was a great idea? Okay, it was. Number five, John Love had a letter in there stating that was never officially, properly resumed. Consent judgment should have probably never gone through in the first place. And just as me personally, twenty-eight years later, I am a Falk Road homeowner, Holly Township taxpayer, Holly Township resident, and I think I have been placed, and all of you have been placed, in a position of taxation without representation. Because my current board, my current township, says, "Hence that, hence that, consent judgment." In some of these things, there are...in Booth Patterson's letter, there is a point where the Holly...the insurance company bows out of it because they don't want to deal with it anymore. There was misrepresentation by Gregory Parker, who was the insurance lawyer. Our own lawyers for Holly Township did not even fight this fight. The insurance company's lawyer fought this fight. So, I don't think I'm being represented right now with my taxation. I've got some decent taxation on that, though. I'd like to make some formal requests. These were going to be in reference to what was supposed to be on the agenda for the meetings. I will do this personally by letter to Mr. Cullis. But concerning the situation, I'd like a legal review of the consent judgment to see if there is any way it was entered into incorrect in the first place. I'd like to name the township supervisors and the board that voted to enshrine us into this current predicament, adding in all minutes from previous meetings, both board and planning, prior to the vote on the consent judgment, so we can get the feeling of what was happening. What did exactly Jenny Glouge not post correctly to allow us to lose our zoning rights? Because it seems like one incorrect posting would not make the whole township lose their zoning rights. And when exactly did Gerald Minor acquire a parcel number? I don't have it, because it's in my book that was handed out to other people. It's a little cut out on Falk Road, and should it have been allowed into the consent judgment? It is in the consent judgment, but I am questioning when he purchased that property, or should have been in that consent judgment. So, just...I'm just going to touch on one or two very quick things in Supervisor Lambert's letter. We will get to the information in your hands. So, Supervisor Lambert, you requested I do some research to assist Holly Township residents with concerns raised in the Holly Hills manufactured home development in North Holly Road. This is approximately 2010. It has a very complicated investment history. My recollection of the history of the site is that a former township clerk, G.E. Glouge, did not properly post a notice. That mistake resulted in our zoning regulations being held invalid by the court. The dependent and property owner at the time, Gerald Minor, then chose the densest and he felt most lucrative land used for the property. Mr. Minor joined forces with Chateau Corporation to assist with the development. There was also significant concern about the wastewater treatment plant proposed for the site. The village of Holly, in the midst of their shortsightedness, did not allow them to hook into the site. When Kernan fought the most battle to stop the sewage plant discharge on its property, Holly Township sued and lost over the whole matter. Our then-legal counsel, Harvin Lee, felt we were poorly represented by our insurance company in the legal battle. In the Booth Patterson letter, this will be my last item, so it'll be about ten seconds longer. Harvin Lee said, after the insurance company was basically backing out, and they had used up all the money in the bond that the insurance company was contracted for, said that he believed that the action by homesteaders like Gerald Minor should be defended and urged in a continuing defense. So, I'd just like to say that I don't think we will be able to present this thing in any way, shape, or form. People are deciding our vote, or our life now, who are no longer...most of them are alive. Ninety-seven of them are alive. So, they sold us down the river back then. That might be a hard term. That might be a hard term. But they basically sold us down the river back then. Well, welcome to your river. Holly Township, maybe back in nineteen eighty, could have handled this density. And I am not opposed to rezoning that back to single-family homes. But for you to throw another four hundred and fifty-four homes when Holly Township, greater Holly area, already is a three-to-one ratio of manufactured housing to stick housing? Great, let's throw another four hundred and fifty. I don't think it's going to work.
Anyone else for public comment? Sir?
My name is John Ewan. I live at fifteen four sixty Falk Road in the Hollywood Township. I've lived on that road for twenties, almost twenty-seven years. My wife has lived on that road since nineteen seventy-one. I've been down Falk Road lately, over the twenty-six years. The trees, and I want to talk about the road. We have old growth trees that are as big around as, from near the door. Just about that big around, all the way up and down. It's like a tunnel of trees. It's a narrow road. It's gotten a little wider over the years. I know every time they grade, they try to make it a little wider, a little wider, but it's still, I measured it the other day. It's about eighteen feet wide. They're saying, when phase three is done, there could be in excess of seven hundred units in the park. So, I mean, just some simple math. If there's two cars per unit, you know, that's fourteen hundred cars. I know already there's going to be one entryway on the Falk Road for phase two. They're saying about halfway down, with possibly another one down farther, you know, when they do phase three. So, you know that some of the people are going to use the access on Falk Road to get to Grange Hall Road and so on. So, if half the cars go to East Holly Road in the morning and in the evening coming back from work, and the other half, you know, use the Falk Road way to get to Grange Hall Road, if you've got seven hundred units, so fourteen hundred cars, I'm just kind of, you know, some simple math. We might have seven hundred cars in the morning and in the evening running up and down Little Falk Road. And when you get down about three-quarters of a mile, there's a hairpin curve, and there's literally a, I don't know, eighty-foot drop all off of there. It looks like Kentucky in there. It's all sort of mountains. So, I'm, I guess I'm speaking for the road and I'm speaking for those silent giants, the trees that can't speak for themselves. I almost have nightmares thinking about all those trees getting ripped down to pave that road someday. And I, it almost, you know, makes my blood turn cold. We, and, you know, as far as our neighbors in Holly Hills, we love you guys. This is nothing personal towards, you know, the residents of Holly Hills. But the amount of traffic and the noise on the road from cars up and down, right now, if there's fifty cars that go down Falk Road during the day, I would be surprised if it's that many. So, from fifty to seven hundred or more, you know, not only going to work, coming home from work, going to soccer games, going out to dinner.
No, it's the timer. I can't get it to stop.
Anyway, I know this is a sleeping giant that's been awoken. In the late eighties, my wife and I were raising babies and we were building a house on Falk Road, the house we live in now. So, I remember reading about all this in the paper, but I was not part of the fight because I was a young guy who was raising a family and building a house and, you know, just trying to survive. But please, you know, if it ever comes to... I haven't talked to anybody on Falk Road that would want it paved and that would want all those trees torn down and paved. That road is a treasure of our community, really.
And you're right, I've been on that road. I've talked to the road commission. They have approved the permit for that drive coming out of there. We've put this information, Mark Taylor's put a lot of information together. We've got it together, along with the, as he said, the court case was huge. We were going to take that, once we get all the information together, and pass it on to the attorney to get an opinion if there's anything that she thinks we can do. We've actually talked to, like you said, it's gone to Ruth Johnson, which Commissioner of State reps have looked at it, Dave Robertson. I think you've...
Dave Robertson spent an hour and a half on my court process.
Yeah, okay. So I said, we've talked to a lot of people and, you know, we will take it there and see what options we have. If you read the actual court decision, it basically says we have no options other than... And here's where we're going to see if that gives us an in, other than public safety. And that's what we're examining. That's what we're working with Matt from Nakva as far as that water. I know that DEQ has had conversations with the village regarding that water. So there's conversations out there, and we're going to look at it and see where we can go.
Who runs the water treatment, so?
They do. They do, and they have a company that they hire.
Highland Treatment. I think it's Highland Treatment.
Yeah, Highland Treatment.
We've had like five or six different...
It's flat back before. Before I release that, if you could, we have a natural, we have a petition to make Falk Road the natural beauty road. It has been inspected by Oakland County and approved with a number of points to make it that. But we need twenty-five signatures for people to live in Holly Township. Only one signature per household. How we go?
I didn't break it.
Well, if we don't have it with us, we will come to you. I promise. Thank you for serving.
Thank you. Anyone else for pub... ma'am?
My name is Linda Pratt. I live at one six two six four Derby Court, Holly Hills resident. Unfortunately, what's coming in will be your worst nightmare. I've lived through too many of these people coming in with the double lines, tearing up our lawns that we have to keep and maintain and we get fined by the community, even though it's their damage. My water pressure's gone now. It's getting worse. My neighbors are getting worse. And our manager tells us, "It's your water tank, it doesn't matter," repeatedly, because we own, we don't have that. I went to pay my rent today and I told my manager of our community that the well fell today. They are replacing it due to the lack of water pressure. That's why it was not working Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We had the boiler. We only got a notice on our porch an hour after they stopped the signing out at the front of the entrance of the park.
My fire wasn't...
I was worried about drinking it. Boy, we went out and bought a lot of water. But that's something we thought, you know, maybe we have to deal with. When Monday came around, we finally were given a notice later in the day that we can, when our water ran out. I had to call up, find out, is it safe to drink? Is it safe to bathe? And so, can you wash my clothes? They were told, oh, yeah, the test came back fine. Apparently, they didn't notify you what parts of the building are evil weak. We're supposed to believe them, because they're supposed to be very careless. Now, the well just went down today, and they're replacing it. And I never lost water pressure. Well, what? I'm sure I did. How was it being rerouted? Where was it being rerouted to? Where was the discharged water going to? The well system was down. And it's being replaced. You've got over three hundred homes going in. That's we keep getting full in phase, or phase two. Phase three, you haven't heard about phase four, which is the backside of the lake. They want to build all the way back to the backside of the lake. You go into the office there, you see the homes painted out, and you ask about behind the lake. And I said, oh, who owns that? That's nice, you know? They're walking, they're walking out there. Keep Falk Road the way it is? Oh, we own it. I said, what do you mean, we own it? Our group owns it? Well, it's the corporation has it now. But they are bottom line, and they don't care. They got their permits, and it's going to go in. But everybody's going to get affected by it. And because we have renters in there, not homeowners anymore. I can't sell my house. I was told by our leader, we're not even five thousand houses. And I keep, my husband still owns that for years. He don't want to walk away. I want to keep the food that we have. And I don't want to see another double water hole. And I've lived there twelve years. We may need an access road, but I don't think we need two or three. We need one, because when my neighbors' houses burned down, which is my and his, and ours, there was no way to get in and out. It took them twelve years to move it, bust out from the front hall of East Holly Road up to the clubhouse. And they had clearance for it for twelve years. And they didn't bother to. Children slipped, they signed, they get hurt. And finally, this company said they had to go to the school board to get it approved. Supposedly, they've gone year after year after year. But this is a home company that got the children up at the clubhouse, to be picked up in the morning. That's very intense. I don't think they've done good. I may catch black on this, may owners, more than likely. I don't care anymore. That's what it's come down to. But I don't think people on Falk Road, nobody that lives up and down that beautiful little road, who my friend Brian should have to look and listen and watch the trees fall down. And I don't like falling, because that's really going to happen. You're going to have more people, more congestion. We don't have a police department that comes out. I wait three days when I got threatened by a neighbor that literally in our community. It was considered low priority. They said, long till they actually shoot you. Then we can do something. But they can't afford to have the Holly Police Department come in because they're wearing our lot rent. And the lot rent is close to five hundred dollars per home. The people that rent their club rent, over eleven to twelve hundred dollars a month, depending on the size of the bedroom you've got. So this is what it's coming down, if it's money and they want their money, they want to make their move, that's fine. Everybody's allowed to do that. But the real people that live there, that own there, either are passing away and the mortgage company is making a deal with them, paying some of the debt. People are walking away from their homes because they can't sell them. They're not worth anything. And you get three, four hundred more homes in, and they are fifteen feet apart from the back of one home carpet line to the other one. And you're less than six feet from the back of my house to my neighbor's little shed. He is two feet from the other side of his shed to his house. We had guys with surveys peeping out every day, walking that field in the third district. We were told that, yeah, they detect the water in Holly, but each tab is going to call. Every homeowner, not renter, homeowner there over forty thousand. I don't, I had, I don't want that in our house. I thought it was going to be a great place to live. I lived from here from Detroit nineteen seventy. Yeah, I have that, it's still real, it's still great. My kids grew up here. I grew up here, basically. I like it. But if you let big people come in like this and don't give any thought to people that live here in Falk Road about their way of life, then they're not doing their job, I'm sorry.
Anyone else for public comment?
I would just like a little more comment. I've never even heard of phase four yet. But if they go to phase three, if they were actually allowed to continue this, the lot rent at this time alone, they're making a little over two million dollars a year, two hundred seventy-four they got. If they do phase three and phase four, Meritas Corporation, which owns twenty of these type of situations in Michigan and Indiana alone, from this development alone, will make three point eight million dollars a year. And I doubt it would cost them three hundred thousand to maintain it after what it's been structured. Three point eight million dollars. That's a lot, I guess, like, three point eight million dollars.
I know. You know, when the lady made the comment, she said, if you let them. It's not a question of us letting them. The township fought it. We're going to have it reviewed by the attorney. We're going to have, you know, we do have, Nakva has been working with them on safety regulations and road widths and traffic. We're going to be looking at creating, with Matt Wheel, I had a conversation with him. We're going to be looking at creating a traffic authority, which will give the authority to go in and write tickets for some of those cars that are parked there. We're going to do what we can do. And, you know, beyond that, I don't know. It is frustrating.
Could you possibly look into moving the entrance for phase two should it ever be built? Out from in front of four out of the eight homes that are on Falk Road and are beautiful, whatever areas they could put that in? Why did the engineer put it directly across from three of the most prominent homes on that?
That's a question you probably have to ask Oakland County Road Commission. They're the ones that grant the permit.
We're getting any answers from anybody.
I'd actually contacted Oakland County Road Commission back in April, had called them on Friday night. I finally got a report number generated, which they, all they sent me back was an email that said, Falk Road has been approved for a permit, and there are no intentions on improving Falk Road at any given time. I...
Was that from Rick Saborski?
That, I'll have to check on the email. I sent an email back and said, what does that all mean? Can I please get the report? Because it has a report number. I've got one. So I'll have to, again, push the needle.
If you give me that report number, I'll see if I can get it for you.
Just very little.
Let me just say quickly, I was there in nineteen ninety when they did this deal. Harvin Lee didn't have the authority to sign a settlement that violated the law. They violated the law in this whole process. So, they signed off and everybody went back to sleep. That was the end of it. The other thing is, if you think talking to any of these lawmakers is going to make any difference. Michigan is the only state in the nation that has a trailer park commission that has total authority over the trailer parks. And they have no rent control, if not, this is the only state. That's because the lobbyists have bought off every one of the lawmakers up there. And Robertson's lawn, Graves, the whole gang up there. That's why they have so much money they want with advantage. That's why it's this way.
Lisa, did you want to, Lisa? Did you want to go ahead and...
If it's all right with you.
Sure. We'll finish the public comment. Where's that?
My name's Sarah Catona. I live at five two three three Coventry. A few things I want to address. First off, I don't know the job that Amy does, but I sat here like everyone else and listened. My Tony so passionately praised her. I feel like if you were going to put a motion to lower her pay, you should have came here prepared and maybe asked Amy what her daily duties include, as well as George. Sounds like she does an awful lot. I've seen her hustle her butt around here. So I just want to put that out there. I don't think it's fair for you to attack her without some backup. Do you know what she does every day? Do you have a list? Because I think you should really investigate into that before you talk about diminishing her position.
As I said, it's not about person. We're talking about the position.
No, it's about the position. Do you know what she does every day?
It's about the position.
Right, but what position does she hold? And what does she do every day? Does she add value? Because if she does, she should stay. Call that us with some facts and stuff. You said we don't need that position. That's what I want to say about that. Number two, Holly Hills. I'm a renter there. I will be moving, but I do care about my environment. When I first moved in there, I was the last house on Coventry. There wasn't a house near me. Couldn't throw a stone at a house near me. Everything was fenced off, and I, it was a wetland. They couldn't build on it. For the first five years we rented there, they couldn't build on it. I used to have tons of deer, hundreds of deer, hundreds of geese, tons of birds. Nothing. All I see now is trailers. Those wetlands are gone. Ropes have been torn down, black mesh is gone, trailer after trailer. That hurts our environment. They cut down trees. There's tons of trees on the back of that property that wildlife's still living. That's going to be gone. It does affect the water. When that fire was there, they said we didn't lose water pressure? We did lose water pressure. I was in high school. I didn't have water for three hours in high school. And I didn't know why, until I looked at my Facebook and someone said, hey, you can't get out right now, there's a fire. And I said, is that why I have no water? I did lose water pressure. I had no water. I couldn't even take a shower. You know, so there is a problem with the water system. Our water did get shut down. All I got was a notice on my car. I didn't even know the water, I couldn't drink or boil it. So, I went out to my car, I didn't cook them with that water. So, tell me, we need something in place, we need this water tested, we need someone to fight for us, we need someone to fight for this community and our environment, not with each other. We need to fight for the community. I'm a taxpayer. I want to know that you guys are really, you have our back. Put this on the agenda. What do we have to do? This is our time, this is our kids' future. You guys may be older, but I have kids that are gonna grow up here. We want to be heard.
I, I understand your passion, you have been heard, I've met with Mr. Taylor, I came to that meeting, it was at Carl Richter, in fact, I called him and moved it to Carl Richter so we could, we could be involved.
And I was there, and I appreciate that.
But when you ask us, I just want you to understand, when you ask us, put it on the agenda, the problem is, we don't have anything to put on the agenda over yet, we're still working on it, we're working through the fire department, we're working with the DEQ, I've been on the phone to the road commission, we've gotta put this stuff together. Right now, what we have is a court case with, with a decision that says, we can't do anything but hear. So, we're working on it, and as soon as we have something viable, we will put it on the agenda.
So, what do you need to be viable?
When you will get something, George, or when Mark will get it for you? That's what I want to know, George. When you get it, or when Mark gets it for you? Or your assistant, George?
When the attorney tells us we have something to go with.
You haven't talked to the attorney yet.
Well, that's all I have to say, but I do think before you threaten someone's position, you need to have some backup. I would like to see what Amy does, because it seems like if someone's passionate enough about her position to stand up here and talk about her, then she's probably doing a damn good job. That's all I got to say.
Is there anyone else for...
Yep, I have something to add.
Okay.
Lisa Holden, 11243 Drive. So, I think part of the issue that all the people here are experiencing is just a lack of transparency. We don't know what's going on. So, you got a lot of stories, a lot of rumors, a lot of angry feelings, a lot of angst going on. So, I'm gonna propose this, can we add this to the agenda every month? So, we can get a monthly update at this meeting about what's happening, who's being contacted, what's going on? Give us some information that'll give Mark and the rest of this group a chance to feed new information that we're getting and we're researching, and then we can get some round time feedback and see what happens.
Thank you.
Stacy Taylor, 15566 Fault Road. So, my opinion on this is clean drinking water supersedes anything else y'all got going on here. Sorry, just saying. I just spent a couple hours, I mean, I've spent so much time on this, even the last couple days, reading over what happened at Flint. And first, the township people and the local people, oh, there's nothing to worry about, we're good, we're good. And then Hurley, the doctor there, she actually looked into it and she says, okay, no, we have a problem. The state goes, oh, your tests are wrong. No, everything's good. It took a pastor and it took several other people to step in and finally convince the state that yes, there was a great problem. Protecting the environment is a First Amendment right. The fact that this is out of our local zoning and planning commission is partly why this is a problem, and how this all went down and how Meritas, Minor, and all the seven other owners since then have done this, is they separate you from the herd, they take on one thing at a time, they do whatever law, court case they have to do, pretty sure there's a couple times money or political pressure was applied, they go to people they know, they're welcome buddies, I think Engler's involved in this, because everything that's happened wrong with water in Michigan right now, the three big ones, Engler was in office at all three of them, and I'm 99%, I don't, I didn't say this, but Engler's top assistant was married to Nestle's, she was husband, her husband was Nestle, okay? Just saying, that's probably how that one went down. Sorry about the clerk making an error, I mean, it's not you, but Jenny Blutish back in the day, it's too easy for some collusion or corruption to happen there, because that one error overturned the lawsuit that a judge signed up and said, this aquifer should be protected, it should remain zoned by the agricultural, and he got his way then. And then he goes to the MDEQ, and then he goes to the DNR, and there's documents that have been handed to you tonight that a lot of y'all didn't even know about, I wouldn't even know about if I hadn't gone out and talked to these tree trimmers slash surveyors six months ago. This would just be happening three months from now, all of a sudden bulldozers would be pulling in, I'm like, what are they doing? What are they doing? They have a trailer park that has 274 units. They do not need to make a mega park. If you read the apparent problem, it is happening all over Michigan, in Eaton Rapids, I'm sorry, Eaton, uh, Charlotte, Grand Rapids, uh, they are forcing these mega parks, there's no infrastructure, they cannot handle it, they're not passing the school zoning, the millages are asking for, because there's not enough people that have stick homes that are paying nonspecific taxes, which is what the people that own the mobile homes are, they can't fund to pay their schools. I had met a teacher yesterday at the Holly Presbyterian Church, Marcy, and she was angry as hell and called Robertson out and says, how come we're one of the lowest subsidized schools in that area? They can't keep teachers at the high school, good quality teachers, they lost three counselors this year alone. She says they're $31 million behind right now on fixing the buildings to run the school system here, for the people that live here, and they want to have a major company, a business, bring in another thousand students. And they don't pay for those students, they don't pay for the roads, they don't pay for the, uh, this has to be revisited. We have a very good luxury right here, we have had 30 years of people, documents, studies, saying, this should not, could not, and is of serious consequences if we allow this to happen. We're asking for your help. You are not the only people we're asking, but we're telling you that this is gonna impact this community in a very great way. At, at close proximity alone, Fault Road comes up, okay? The turn alone at Fault Road and at Rude Road are, are gonna be a nightmare, okay? We all know how the traffic comes in with speed both ways up on Grange Hall. 14,000, when they were repaid in just a little bit, it was backed up all the way to 75. At East Holly, you have an elementary school right here, half a mile, half a mile down, you have the phase one down of ravine for down of where the grilling wetlands are, that's where all the people that live there now are coming out. And a half a mile further from that, you have a high school. How is the traffic gonna work there? Let alone on cruise night, let alone on Dickens Festival weekends, and you can't make any corrections at the Red Devil because you got two sets of train tracks that cross right there. We need some answers, and we need a really, 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 really hard look at this, because the future of our community depends on this. And in 30 years, that Holly Hills subdivision is gonna be kinda rough. In 50 years, it's gonna be really rough. So, what kind of people are you gonna have right in close proximity to your elementary and your high school? Let alone kids skipping school, they can walk along the way, pedophiles, I mean, you name the problems. How about the little four-year-old girl that's riding her bike down Fault Road on a pink little bicycle, and somebody, fire truck comes hauling down the road to get to that fire, and you come down the ravine at the wrong time or up the ravine at the wrong time, it's really not safe. And it's very, 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 very concerning to me. One last thing, and I just read this yesterday, but I just, we just came into possession of a box of stuff that one of the ladies that won this lawsuit back in the day, Joan Kozlo, she passed away a year ago. Her daughter went to her home in Whitehall and she recovered her box, there's all kinds of videotapes, which they can't choose as publicly to review. We have all kinds of documentation, we have file upon a file that we're working our way through. But this is for you, Matt, and I mean, I, I appreciate where you're at. You're not, Matt, you don't have glasses on today.
I'm the fire chief.
I'm Stacy. Okay. So, what he said was, is because they need quality, I mean, quantity of water to fight the fire is not quality. He wants to put two more jumbo wells into the aquifer to provide that quantity. Well, in this report, '92, and it was brought in front of the board, the very worst thing they can do is punch large aqua, or large holes into that aquifer there, because it will cause that clay barrier to be perforated or punctuated, and that could permanently damage, damage this aquifer. I appreciate everything y'all did tonight, I appreciate everybody that came and spoke tonight, that's all I've got for today, thank you for your time, but I'm telling you, that 30 years has given us the luxury to fix this. They have a trailer park with 274 units. Sweet. Let's protect the rest of it. Thank you.
It's a state problem.
Yeah, because they lost the lawsuit, they lost all jurisdiction.
Yep. Anyone else for public comment?
Let's go ahead and beer.
Well, can I, I'd just like to clarify what, what could be on the agenda for the next meeting, as far as checking the water out there, testing the water out there, and then the, the lawyer is going to check in. Are those things gonna be on the agenda for next, next time?
Sure.
The two motions from the planning.
What are you going to put on the agenda?
We're gonna talk about the two items, the, the two items that are coming from the planning committee.
They, they requested the board, so that'll be coming.
That'll, that'll be on the thing.
Thank you.
All right.
I want to take two minutes.
I'm Amy Folt, 6053 Great Lakes Drive, for transparency. I am a taxpayer and a homeowner. I am a code enforcement officer and assistant supervisor for Holly Township. I worked every election for Holly Township since 1999. I was the deputy clerk from 2003 to 2006. I started a building department, permanent files project, where I organized and filed 123-layer fee of permanent files for Holly Township. I have been consistently employed for the last five years there. It's very important that everybody here not only come to just these meetings, but we understand that there are three administrative positions that hold the office hours Monday through Thursday, every week of the year, outside of holidays and weekends and Fridays, which changed in July of 2017. In transparency, all three of these middle members are available to you through phone, email, or walking into the office at any time for any questions, and that goes for both trustees as well. So, you are, all of us are able to educate ourselves on anything that affects any member, any taxpayer, non-taxpayer, renter, interested party at any time, including every single one that this board can educate themselves at any time of the day, any day of the week, most likely, if you've got Georgia cell phone. Thank you.
And our website. Website's available, 24-hour.
Just ten seconds, I'd like to let everybody know I'm Mark Taylor, if you haven't met me before, I have got a nice little file on this. Don't necessarily go into township, if you want information, I am available quite a bit, not mostly on weekends. I will give you copies of anything you want to see, but I've got this much information so you won't, you won't see any complete ones. We've been hanging out as best we can, but I am available.
And invite your friends.
All right. On that, on that final note, one last call for public comment.